Seeing the presence of a quorum, we'll call to order this meeting of the Amherst-Pellam Regional School Committee.
And seeing a presence of a quorum for Union 26, call the meeting to order at 6:33 PM.
Okay, and our first item of business, actually, our first item of business is going to be to welcome Mr. Dinsmore to our group. Do you want any introduction?
So, Mr. Dinsmore and I have known each other since both of us were younger. Is that maybe a fair way to say it? But we're thrilled to have him join us. Two years ago, when the group was a little more active, he was not a member, but was part of the group of students who were involved in student leadership and connections with the school committee. He was, we're appreciative of his offer to join us this spring, and welcome.
Wonderful, welcome. Unfortunately, our next item of business is going to take us away for a moment.
(inaudible)
See, the Chair is so declaring, "The need to enter into executive session in accordance with open meeting law Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30, Section 21A pursuant to purpose three, which is to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel," in this case, Sean Mangano, "with plans to return to open session upon its conclusion." Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Need a roll call vote for this?
Yes.
Yes, roll call vote, right. So, let us do a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan, aye.
Manino, aye.
Demerly, aye.
Kosensky, aye.
Nakajima, aye.
Ordonas, aye.
Hazard, aye.
So, the Regional Committee is now in executive, will retire to executive session.
And for Union 26, I will read the motion as well. Consider entering executive session in accordance with the open meeting law Massachusetts General Law 30A, Section 21A pursuant to purpose three to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, Mr. Sean Mangano, with no plans to return to open session. So, we, after executive session, will immediately be adjourned. Can I get a second? Mr. Manino, thank you. And we'll go around this way.
Mary, aye.
Hazard, aye.
Ordonas, aye.
Demerly, aye.
Manino, aye.
Thank you. We are now in executive session for Union 26.
We will call to order the Amherst-Pellam Regional School Committee. Just as a statement at the beginning, because we're going to be discussing an item one of new and continuing business, for a variety of issues around school safety, we are going to have an announcement period in a moment after we have approval of the minutes, but I'm also going to allow for an additional period, for a brief additional period for comments later if there are any comments from the public, because I think it's, given the significance of the issue, it's appropriate to do that after we've had whatever presentations and conversations there are from the committee. So, with that, we'll move to the item of approval of the minutes of February 13, 2018. I don't know if the committee's had a chance to review the minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes of February 13, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Maria, seconded by Ordonios. Except any edits or changes that there may be. You know, just people are looking, so you can't give them all. Okay, all those in favor approving the minutes of February 13 signify raising your hand by aye. And any nays, abstentions? Abstention, Kosensky. The minutes are approved. Now, we'll move to announcements and public comments. If there are any announcements, or public comments, excuse me, we'll do announcements in the committee's second. Public comments, you may approach, yes?
I'm just, I feel like we're about ten minutes ahead of schedule, and I just wonder if we want to wait to start public comment until it goes into time, just in case.
I know there's a few people that thought the meeting started at seven, so they're not here yet.
Then we can do that. No, we can do that. So, in all honesty, there's nothing else for us to do if we're following the agenda. So, I move to recess until 7:05. No objections. That was what you called. And it's weird, because my mom's much younger. And so, whenever I get emails from my dad, and he just talks about what he's doing, like, everything he writes makes me worry. Like, I just hope you're okay, and, you know, especially because he has, like, a really archaic way of writing things. So, everything is sort of like,
It's very formal.
I don't know how to read that. Is this a problem? Is it not a problem? You know, and it's sort of, it's just the strangest thing. It's just, loving to death, but it's just sort of, I should never,
She was like, it was just bad. And then she was like, I was trying to, I guess, I was trying to put the Gmail app on her phone. And I was like, well, have you done this? She's like, I don't do apps. I stay away from those. I was like, okay.
Okay, so did we?
Yeah, it's great. When I got, I was helping her clean out her house, and she had, like, a bag of the address codes.
Where did Mr. Sullivan go?
The first time, I was like, please.
Yeah, 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 clearly. But where's Mr. Sullivan?
And then the next time, I was like,
He disappeared on us.
Well, the library, I was like, they're not,
How did he do that? It's like he sneaked out the side door.
There he is.
There he is. Okay, good.
The things you make me do here, it's not a big step.
So, I'm going to, the time being 7:05 PM, we're going to recall the meeting to order. We thank everyone for their patience, and I congratulate the committee on our efficient executive session, which got us through much faster than we anticipated. The next item of business is announcement and public comments. As I'd made a comment earlier, and we're happy to have announcements, or, I'm sorry, public comments now regarding item number one, new and continuing business on school safety, but I also did want to reiterate that we're going to have a brief public comment period at that time, too, after there's a presentation or discussion by the superintendent and the school committee, so that if there's a desire to make comments at that time, people are able to do so, fully informed of what the superintendent, potentially the principals, and the school committee have discussed. So, at this point, we'd entertain any, any public comment at all, obviously, and that subject or anything else on our agenda, or things people want to bring forward. The drill is essentially, you'd come up to the microphone. I'll just take people in order, as opposed to people raising their hands, and you should identify yourself by name. If there's any other relevant descriptor, you can do so. If not, that's fine. And then you have up to three minutes to speak to the committee. The committee is not going to respond directly and engage in a question and answer or other debate or discussion with you. So, if you haven't done this before, I apologize in advance that it's going to seem like we're sitting here just being passive recipients of what you say to us, but in fact, that's exactly what we're doing. And typically, we follow that format actually out of respect to ensure that whatever people want to bring to the table, we're able to allow them to do so without in any way casting into judgment or question the things they want to say to us. So, at this time, we're open for public comment if people would like to approach the microphone.
Good evening. I'm Rick Martin. I'm the superintendent at Franklin County Technical School, and I would like to make a public comment regarding the preferred preference initiative that's been put forth between Amherst and Smith-Vogue. My concern is it would limit the choices of the towns of Leverett, Amherst, Pellam, and Shootsberry to have a vocational school of their choice. When they have a preferred status, it is not a budget-saving initiative, because at Franklin County Tech, we would match anything of a 5%, 10%, 15%, you name it, on that end of it. It wouldn't be a savings in transportation, because Franklin County Tech provides its own transportation. It would actually be a savings to Amherst in that regard. We have a number of families from these towns that have historically come to Franklin County Tech and are significantly concerned about their lack of choice for no gain that they can think of that would be a benefit to these communities. When we talk about miles from school, the towns of Leverett is approximately 10 to 12 miles from Franklin County Tech, where it's 18 miles, to Smith-Vogue. There are towns that, such as Shootsberry as well, which we are a lot closer to. So, we are significantly concerned about the impact that this will have on the communities which we have been serving for 40 years, and having the students that have already applied to Franklin County Tech, and their families and brothers that are currently in the school, because we have these applications, told that they cannot come because we are not a preferred-status school, is very disingenuous to those families and to those students whose brothers and sisters and relatives, and many are here tonight, that have come to our school. I have received no contact, except when I reached out last week to the Amherst superintendent. My business manager received no contact. We checked out emails, phones, and what have you. There's been no communication to Franklin County Technical School, other than us trying to look online and find out when these meetings are. That was a concern and an appearance of nontransparency, which was a significant concern. The state is unaware of a 5% tuition decrease, which is something that had to be done by law. So, there's a lot of things that we are extremely concerned about, and we would respectfully request that this initiative either be tabled or revoked. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further public comments? If there are, please approach the microphone, identify yourself. You'd have three minutes to speak.
Hi, my name is Bonnie. I am a resident here in Amherst, and I also would like to speak on the same subject. I've lived here in Amherst for about nine years, about nine years, and I have a son who goes to Franklin Tech. And I also graduated from Franklin County Tech, and I have, my father was the superintendent, he was the administration, he also was part of Smith-Vogue. My son initially applied to both of the schools, and Smith didn't want him, which was fine, because I kind of preferred him to go to Franklin Tech. My concern is, is that he is now a junior, he will be a senior, and what this will do to him. I'm not really sure what, what's going on with the whole thing, but he will be a senior. He just got out on co-op. He is finally doing great. And I also have two children who are six. I have a set of twins. And I would like them to also have the option to go to Franklin County Tech. Yeah, so, I, yeah.
Thanks. For additional public comments, please approach the microphone, identify yourself again.
Hi, my name is Alicia Richter, and I am a resident of Shootsberry. And I'm also a graduate of Franklin County Tech, and my husband is too. Sorry. That school did more for me than anything else. When my father passed away, the teachers and the guidance counselors were just there for me in a way that I don't think anyone else could have been. And I have a daughter now, who is 15 months old, and we've always dreamed of her being able to go to Franklin County Tech, because it's where we both went and where we are now today because of that school. And it breaks my heart to think that she might not have that opportunity, where we have to uproot and move somewhere else so she can have that opportunity, because I love where I live. Thank you.
Welcome. More public comments, if there are any. Just come to the microphone again, identify yourself. You have up to three minutes to speak.
Hi, my name's Christina Eddy. I am a Leverett resident. I have five children who are currently in or will be in the Leverett school system and therefore Amherst. I do have a large concern about the distance change that would happen for my kids being in northern Leverett. That's probably a good 40-minute different ride by my vehicle, so by a school bus. That's very significant. It would also greatly impact the idea of me attending sporting events, their extended family going to any of their sporting events or school activities. To be able to join in and be part of that community would be very difficult versus Franklin County Technical School. And my main concern was that I had no idea that this was even an issue until a couple hours ago. Again, I have children in Leverett school system already, and parents there were not notified that this had come up and was going to be up for vote. And the fact that it impacts us dramatically versus maybe an Amherst parent, and we were not notified, gives me a large concern. My husband is an alumni of Franklin County Tech. We have some great memories there, and we see no reason for that to no longer be an option for us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Again, if there are further public comments, come forward, identify yourself. You have three minutes.
My name's Shane Jernigan.
Thanks.
Franklin Tech, class 2004. There's, I don't know enough about what's going on, but I kind of get the gist. For me, going to the tech school was the best thing I ever could have done. The 2003, 2000, well, no, it would have been 98, 99, I guess. Went to Amherst Middle School, not a good experience for me at all. And I understand, not every school fits everybody perfectly, but I don't know that I would have graduated had I not had another place to go. Smith School, probably a great school, but you're not guaranteed to get in there, and it's frankly too far. There's going to be, those points, we're going to beat that horse to death tonight, I guarantee you. But I work M.J. Moran. Tech School got me in there. Going out on co-op, still there now, 14 years later. So, had no intention of leaving. I don't know where I'd be right now if it wasn't for the tech school, and I don't think you should take that away from anybody else. That's all I've said.
So, we're at, by the way, 7:15, which was the time we initially set for public comments and announcements. If there are people who want to make further comments, I'm going to extend the period, just because I know people, no, no, I'm just letting people know first. I'm going to extend the comment period, because obviously, so many people have come. So, please.
So, I'm Steve Weller. I live in Leverett, and my wife, Darcy, and I have lived there for about seven years. And I think that, so, to be clear, Darcy and I won't have kids, aren't having kids, but I think that the opportunity for kids growing up in the Leverett, Pellam, Shootsberry area to have the choice to go to something like Franklin County Tech is really, really, really important. I mean, the programs that Franklin County Tech and Smith-Vogue offer are different. Not to say that one is better than the other, but I think the depth of the programs that Franklin County Tech offers is, is pretty impressive based on the constituency that, that the towns have. And I want to go ahead and say that since even before we bought our house in Leverett, we've had exposure to a family like the Leclaires here, and Shane, too, has done some work on our house. And I just, I think it would be a shame for people to, for kids to have to find their own transportation to, to Amherst and then have to go to Smith, you know, Smith-Vogue, which it just, you know, with a different offering, it just doesn't seem, doesn't seem fair. So, I don't, you know, I, I'm behind, like, you know, we're taxpayers, like, in Leverett, and we're totally behind continuing to be able to send kids in our town to Franklin County Tech. I'm a, I'm taking a welding class at Franklin County Tech right now as part of the, you know, continuing ed or adult education programs, and it's tremendous. I mean, the instructors there spend so much time with us, and to lose that resource, I think, would just be massive loss to the community, not only from an adult education standpoint, but just from a, you know, from a high school age kind of standpoint. Like, what, what else are these kids going to do? Like, go to, like, you know, have their parents drive them to Amherst and take the bus and go there and go to Smith? Doesn't seem fair, and I'm not, I'm not behind it at all as a taxpayer. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Patrick Jernigan, Franklin County Tech, class 2006. I graduated from plumbing. At the tech school, I mean, it really zapped me up for everything that I've done to this point in my life. I work Franklin County Sheriff's Office. I hold a plumbing license for the facility. I got my plumbing license at 19. If I had had to go the distance that I, that I would have had to, to get to Smith every day, it wouldn't have been feasible for me. Many of my teachers, they live in the community. I live in Franklin County, so to essentially eliminate a Franklin County town from Franklin County Technical School just doesn't make sense to me. I'm still in contact with many of my teachers from the tech school. I still am involved with many things from that community, and I am a resident of Leverett today. And I, my family grew up there. We've lived there. Like, this is very concerning that something in our school district would make this decision without informing anybody in our town. Like, it just seems really roundabout and, and a little bit shortcoming of what I would expect from educators, to take a student and limit them to what they can accomplish by eliminating a school in their district, or in their community. As I said, I'm, I'm very proud of my school, I'm very proud of my alumni, I'm very proud I graduated from that school, and I really hope you guys reconsider that judgment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Matt Boucher, class of 2007 Franklin Tech. I graduated landscaping and horticulture. One of the big things I think might be an issue is the tech school and Smith-Vogue both offer similar programs, but the tech school does have programs that Smith-Vogue doesn't have. Also, Also, again, you know, the distance, for me, from my house, it was 20 minutes to Franklin Tech. And it would have been 45 or 50, depending on traffic, you know, an hour and a half on the way home from Smith. And like everyone else has been saying, you know, just the opportunities I've had, the teachers are, you know, barring on the best I ever had. Amherst, I know, gives you an awesome education. I'm sure Smith-Vogue does too. But if you look statistically at what the Franklin Tech School does for the kids too, I mean, it's not, I mean, look at me, I'm dirty. I didn't come in a suit and tie. I work hard all day. But, you know, there's a lot of blue collar guys in the town of Leverett and of Schutzbury. And like Shane and Patrick said, if I had had, you know, I spent two years at Amherst Middle School. And if I had to come here, I'm pretty positive I would have dropped out just because of the fact that people like us don't necessarily want to just be in a classroom learning academics all day. You know, there was days in school where I went home dirtier than this, you know? And that's not an opportunity you get here at all. At Smith-Vogue, yes, you do. And I understand that's a great school, but I think definitely need to be able to keep the option of going to Franklin Tech for many years to come. There's been a good, good bunch of people that's come from there, so.
Thank you.
My name is Lynn Wood. I'm a resident of Leverett. I have two children at the Franklin County Tech School. And I just learned about this. And I guess I just want to mention that due to the limited information that's been passed along to the schools and families that would be impacted by voting on the vocational school of preference tonight, I'm asking that there be an opportunity for more public dialogue before this decision is made. The fact that this is up for a vote tonight when it seems like so few people knew what, you know, what was happening. And, and I don't know of any other families that were actually notified. It really seems to go against the, the inclusion of which Amherst wants us to feel a part of. So I guess that's, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Thomas Kozlowski. I'm an alumni of Franklin Tech, class 2010, auto tech. I feel that not giving a student the choice to attend a school they might want to, kind of might set them up for failure in a sense. I know for me, I picked both schools. Franklin Tech to me was a better school overall, I thought, for me. So I worked harder to get there. When I was in there, I worked harder to be there. Had a huge impact on my life. I was able to move forward from there to continue my studies in diesel. From there, I got into parts. So I'm a wholesale manager now. I don't know, I feel if I didn't go to Tech, I wouldn't have the opportunities I have today. I feel like student choice is a big part of it. I think if the student has a choice to decide to go somewhere, it's a place they want to be, they're going to work harder to stay there. And a lot of it, like everyone else was saying, I think it's, you know, it's a long drive. The commute is a lot further. For me, it was about 20, 25 minutes. I know it'd be probably upwards of 50 minutes. But that's about all I have to say. I just feel like student choice would be a, you know, a big thing to, to look into. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi there. It sounds like to me, as I'm listening to everybody, that the best way to share some of this-
Share your name, please. I'm sorry, identify.
Is Tina Leclair. And I was going to say, was to, you know, just getting to know us a little bit, the people who have been at the Tech School. Actually, my name is Tina Leclair. I graduated from Amherst Regional High School, along with my husband Glenn. And my, I have three sons, Kyle and Dean, right there. This is my nephew, Gabriel. And they've all gone to the Tech School. And I have a third son who's at the Tech, Franklin County Technical School. That right there, from North Leverett. We live about 15-minute drive to the Tech School. It has made a huge impact on our family. My son is working for himself in the trades. My son Dean graduated last year. He's graduated with, in welding. They don't have welding at Smith. My nephew here graduated with welding. Both of them are working in the field. My son is also going to GCC. So it's meant a tremendous amount to our family. Community-wise, all these guys went to the school together, Michael, Tom. These kids met at the Tech School. Actually, they didn't. They grew up together in Leverett, those two. But lifelong relationships and the community there for Leverett, that's the closer place. You know, it, it offers an awful lot. They've had a wonderful experience there. Sports and just Superintendent Martin has been wonderful. And I think this turnout too shows our support for the school. It's pretty important. And the last thing to just note is that, you know, in today's day and age with the trades, we need more tradesmen out there. So to limit it to one school, less slots for the kids coming up. My sister's here. Her daughter's planning to enter the Tech, Franklin County Tech next year. She's a Leverett resident. So, critical to us. And so this vote, I, I just hope that you will put it off, listen to, you know, what the community. This is on short notice that we're all here. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks. So I think we will end up, just, just to let people know, it's, I think, two minutes or three minutes? Four minutes before 7:00, three minutes before 7:30. At 7:30, I'd like to be able to close public comments. If there's an urgency to it, obviously we'll keep them open. It's out of respect. Please come forward.
Hi, my name's Zachary Radnick. I'm part of the Franklin County Electrical Program. And over the year that I've been here, I've just, I've noticed such a change in my attitude towards the school in total. And I just think to take that away from kids, it just wouldn't be fair. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Carey. I am an employee of the Franklin County Tech School. I've been there for 18 years as an administrator and a teacher. A lot of these are my former students. And like them, I have not found out about this until very recently. And to you, Dr. Morris, Superintendent, I am sure that in your training and your years as an educator, you have learned, as have all of you who have volunteered your time to oversee this educational enterprise, that inclusivity and a full disclosure of ideas be brought forward to the three, Amherst Regional, Smith-Vocational, and Franklin County Tech institutions who are educational communities as well. They're all affected and impacted by decisions you may make tonight. And I ask you to hold off and do not place this item before a vote until our schools and school communities have a chance to digest, provide feedback to you and the associated superintendent, who's not here, I understand. Thank you for your time and your time tonight.
Hi, my name is Paul Zeradnik. I live in Pelham. And I have two sons, one that's currently going through Franklin now and one that has just graduated. And it's been a very good experience for him and my family. And I feel very fortunate to have the opportunity to be able to go to that school and have Amherst give that opportunity to my, my sons. And it's been very helpful for them. My son James now is coming into the family business. And it was very instrumental, the training that he got at the school. And I just want to say I'm in favor of the, the school and the committee in this town's to continue the, to utilize Franklin. Because I think it's, it's a really good program. And it brings a lot to the, the town. It means a lot to the people in this area. So, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. If anyone really wants to speak, there's one more minute. Just want to make sure I'm not closing off anyone's participation.
I'm Lisa Williams. And that was my sister said, my daughter's planning to go, you know, next year. And she was just accepted. So to get, you know, on our machine tonight or this afternoon, there's a meeting. You might not be able to go. You don't understand the upset. And it's a shame to let politics or all these things kind of push in. And as people who should be deciding this, it was, you know, just very upsetting. And she started calling all her friends in our community. You know, local is Turner's fault, are the kids around here. It's not North Hampton. So I think you're just, you know, you don't realize how much you'd be affecting as these next generations are coming through. Just, you know, by location, it's huge. And, you know, she started texting all her friends because that's who she's supposed to be going a lot of them with. So, just to let you know that it's, you know, sometimes I don't think you realize as a committee, that it's affecting. Thank you.
Thank you. So the public comment period is closed. Thank you very much for your participation in taking the time to come here this evening. I feel compelled to ask the question. I know we have, item one is school safety discussion. There's a part of me that suggests we should move up the Smith-Vocational School of Preference Agreement item. So I guess I'd ask the committee whether we want to move it after school safety or all the way up, depending on what people want to do.
All the way up.
Okay. Are we okay with that? We are okay with that? Then we will do that. We'll move item four of new and continuing business to our next item of business. As an introduction to this, before I hand it over to the superintendent, would you, actually, let me ask you a question. Do you recall the first meeting we discussed this as a group? It was in January. And I'm just saying this publicly because it's something that, I recall the committee robustly discussing the question of whether or not students and parents in the community were aware of the potential change. At one of the meetings, either the first or the second meeting, we discussed it in January, we discussed the question of whether or not Franklin Tech was aware as a school of this potential change. And speaking now for myself, as I introduced this, but I'm not going to be debating anything, I know that I personally raised the question repeatedly of whether or not the school community, whether it's parents or alumni or others, were aware of, but also had any particular viewpoints on the subject. Because knowing that this is a historic tie to members of our community. And again, I'm not going to, I'll say this very quickly because I don't want to enter into debate before calling it on you. I had worked with both Smith, in my previous life professionally, and I talked about this in the meeting, I had worked with both Franklin Tech on some of the development of their manufacturing and machining program and deeply respected it, as well as also as Smith-Vogue. And so I actually had awareness of their capability and legacy. And so I know I had raised, and Mr. Sullivan had raised, and others this question. So I'm, I'm saying that not out of defense because we get to discuss and do whatever we want to do. But I'm just saying, we, we had in fact raised some of these questions. And we need to proceed from here. So do you want, if anything?
Yeah, I'd like to provide a bit of context.
Sure.
So I wanted to remind, and we're going, I think the only downside of going out of order, and I agree with going out of order, is that we don't talk about budget first, right? So the reason I say that's unfortunate is, I just want to remind the room or share with the room that based on the contributions the towns made, and this isn't a critique, this is just my reality, I've been asked to cut over $1.1 million of the regional budget. And the way it broke out differently with certain towns, you know, which we'll talk about a little later. And there's no blame involved, but some towns are paying a whole lot more. Some towns are actually paying less than they paid in the past. And I think it's a complicated scenario. You're right that this was shared both at a school committee meeting in January as well as a four-town meeting with all the representatives from Leverett in terms of school committee, who were able to attend, finance committee, and select board as an idea. Oh, yeah. And I'll try to get the mic. Sorry about that. My apologies. So I want to acknowledge a few things without being so clean in responding to public comment. But this came out of a budget situation. It didn't come out of, the recommendation come from any dissatisfaction with Franklin Tech in terms of their programming at all. It was coming up with cutting $1.1 million out of our budget based on what the towns told us they could pay. I think just another clarifier is that, on the agreement that's before you, for you to consider is that no students who are currently at Franklin Tech will be asked to leave Franklin Tech. It will affect students who would be incoming Franklin Tech students. But current Franklin Tech students, as part of the agreement that you have in the packet, would continue to finish their educations at Franklin Tech. I think in terms of the different offerings as listed in the agreement, if there are different offerings at Franklin Tech or any other Voke school for that matter, I want to broaden that approach. If the agreement is passed and a student wants to have a concentration that's not offered at Smith-Vogue, they can go to that other vocational school. This is a really awkward conversation, but I do feel like I need to share some things and not in an assertive or aggressive way, but around communication. Because I think it's really important. Because as you noted, as the chair noted, this was a topic that was discussed here and around communicating with, with the school. So, an email I have from Mr. Mangano on February 6th that went to the superintendent, business officer, manager, and another member of the business department. I don't want to read it because it feels insulting to read.
Could you be more articulate?
Yeah.
It went from Mr. Mangano to whom?
Actually, I am, you know, at the risk of being rude, I think I am.
I'm not trying to be rude.
No, I-
But Dr. Morris, my, my point is when you just said that, you didn't tell me the business manager where.
Yeah.
And so I'm just saying, you need to be fully articulate about what you're saying.
Yep. So, and I'll try to both be loud and articulate. It's just hard because I'm speaking to the committee. I'm just saying this out loud to the community. My job is to speak to the committee. And I'll try to project my voice as well as I can, but that's what my job is to do. So on February 6th, Mr. Mangano sent-
Proceed.
On February 6th, Mr. Mangano sent an email to the superintendent and to manager, to the business manager and another person in the business office at Franklin Tech. And I'm just going to read the email instead of describe it vaguely. It just doesn't make sense. And as awkward as perhaps this is, I think it's a really a critical point around communication. Says, "Good afternoon, I want to update you on a topic the school committee is considering. During this year's budget process, we've explored all options to reduce spending. One option under consideration is to make Smith Vocational in North Hampton the vocational school of preference for the Amherst-Pelham regional schools. The result would be, starting next year, ninth graders would be required to attend Smith. Beyond ninth grade, students could attend another vocational school if their concentration was not, excuse me, not offered at Smith. As you have always been a great partner, we want to make sure you had adequate time to prepare, to provide input on this proposal. There is a budget hearing on February 13th at 6:30 PM in the Amherst Regional High School Library. The committee takes input from the public at this meeting. You can also email feedback directly at schoolcommittee@arps.org or Superintendent Morris, who has copied on this email. Thank you, let me know if you have any questions." Now, I think there's legitimate critiques all around in terms of communication, but I want to be really clear with the committee that we heard the feedback that you had at that late January meeting about communicating with the school, and this was our attempt to do that. I think a lot of the concerns that I heard are valid about transportation. We do have students from all four of our communities who go to Smith. And geographically, there's a lot of truth to, some places in our four communities are closer to one school than they are to another school. I'm struggling, I guess, a bit as I'm looking at the chair about whether you want me to go through the changes to the proposal from the last meeting, whether to open up for dialogue. So I'm just thinking process-wise.
I think, I think process-wise, it would make more sense to open it up. Because I think that for the committee, if, if the, and just to remind the committee, we're not going to debate what the, what the members of the public told us in the sense that we're going to enter into what could be received as a back-and-forth dialogue to what we've heard from the, from the group. What we're going to do is we're going to discuss and debate and ask questions amongst ourselves. And obviously, there may be an appropriate point where you reference something we've learned from the night from the community. And I think that's more than appropriate. But I just, because we have a large group and we've got to get through the business, I want to make sure we're handling ourselves in a way that we feel comfortable and is also both respectful to the audience as well as to our own needs. So why don't we do that now? If you have actually, I'd be surprised if anyone does. If you have a technical point about the question about the agreement, you can feel free to ask that as well or make a comment. Is there anyone who has a comment or question now? Shreena?
Relative importance. How many students in the district go to Smith-Vogue and how many go to Franklin Tech historically?
Right. So I showed those numbers earlier in the meeting. I can pull them up, but historically, well, I can't say 10 years ago historically. Over the last couple of years, it's been about between two-thirds to one-third or three-quarters to one-quarter, with Smith being more. to one-quarter, with Smith being more and Franklin County being less.
Okay. Mr. Demling.
Can you just remind us again the estimated amount saved with this agreement? Because I believe there was a difference between the first year and then expected two years. Describe that. And I just, on the communication, so you went over the email to the superintendent, which was helpful. I think another broader aspect of communication I'd like to hear a little more about is just community outreach?
Right.
Because I think there's a difference between, did we technically communicate to the proper administrative officials? But then there's, you know, was there any additional outreach that was, that was done or any other things that broadened up?
Right. So $25,000 was the estimated savings this year. And what we anticipate is that going up to in the low 30s over the next couple of years. And those are conservative estimates, but it's based on historical averages. I think in terms of communication out, I think it went to, the groups have already shared. So it went to the elected officials in Leverett and Shutsberry and Amherst and Pelham, as well as the school leadership at Franklin County Tech. But it did not go beyond that.
Forgive me, I thought, I thought when we talked about this earlier, and I don't remember which meeting it is now.
Right.
That there was some discussion of when there was outreach to students who were thinking of going into vocational school.
Yeah.
There was an introduction of this topic to them as well.
Thanks. And it's right here in my notes, and I didn't say it out loud. So I apologize. So when students who are eighth grade students went to their counselor, so typically, we have work students who are in eighth grade who want to attend a vocational school, they do it through their guidance counselor. And the guidance counselor had information and language that was, this is under consideration, they communicated that to families who pulled applications and submitted applications for Franklin Tech. They didn't tell them not to apply. They just let them know this was under consideration pending a vote of the school committee. It could affect things. And tried to offer support and options with families under both scenarios, either the scenario where the school of preference vote was taken an affirmative or taken a negative. So that's what the communication, that's what a communication occurred from the middle school guidance department.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
So are there any, any further immediate comments? I mean, to be honest with you, yes.
I have one question, which was, what is the relative percentage of people getting accepted into the tech school? And how does that work? And is there, by reducing down to Smith Voke, is there a chance that fewer students would be accepted into vocational programs?
So that's data that I could gather for you. It's not data I have off the top of my head. A very good question, but I don't have the answer.
Okay. Serena.
A question that came up, Franklin is open admissions and Smith is restricted admissions? I mean, can you, can you get rejected from an application to Franklin?
Yes.
So, yes, Mr. Demling.
Some more of a budget process technical question, but I guess more with this agreement as well. So, you know, we're operating under a deadline of whether to go forward with this agreement or not on two fronts. One is with the potential agreement with Smith Vocational, another is what we have to do for the budget. Because if we don't go forward with this agreement, then that means we need to cut another $25,000 from a budget that we've already cut 1.15 million from. Is that, is that correct?
So I guess you would have two options. One would be what you suggest, the other would be increasing the budget amount that you vote on. I'm not recommending that, but just if you're looking for options, that would be another option.
Okay. And would that be further procedurally, if we approve our regional budget tonight, that would need to be an amendment to that budget, I assume?
That is correct.
Okay. So, there are a couple of things. One, before you move on, I actually would, this is going to sound dumb or funny, but I actually like for you to describe the modest amendments you made to the agreement. Because whether we choose to table this item, approve this item, or defeat this item, we should do in full knowledge of what's being presented to us. And I'm assuming, by the way, the three options we have are to table this item, approve this item, or defeat this item with whatever the repercussions. So that's, I'll be in a moment looking to entertain one of those three things.
Right. So the feedback last time was about a couple of things. Excuse me. What happens if, there was a lot of questions about the agreement lasts and, you know, what if it's not working and having some contingencies? So what was worked out, you'll see, there's a couple of other technical things. It was pulled out of municipal because Smith Voke is a part of the city in Northampton, but they also have their own board of directors and they are an independent agency within Northampton. So there were some legalese that changed mostly at the top of the sheet, but in terms of the bulleted, or the numbered points below, the second sentence under number two, this agreement will terminate effective immediately if ARPS ceases to maintain Smith Voke as its school of preference. So that gives the school committee the right at any point to end the agreement. The downside for, the reason that Smith, just because it seems like an odd language to add from Smith Voke's perspective, but what they suggested is if you did that, it would just, the 5% savings would go away. So that's the reason we're in this conversation is the finances, so they were comfortable with that language. And I think the other one was number seven, unless a vote occurs that it'll automatically renew following, for the following school year after 2023. It's just trying to have a clause that, it's actually intended to remind the committees that, to do it because not everyone will be on the same school committee. In 2023, so that if for some reason people forget about it, it doesn't end, but people say aha, and it's too late to change for the next year. So it's felt like protection for both sides. It'd be good to have that language in there. But those are the primary changes based on the feedback from last time.
So I think we can either entertain a motion. If there's a motion forthcoming, the three motions I'm thinking of are a move to table, a move meaning postponed consideration of this to a future meeting. The second one would be a move to approve, and the third would be a move to reject, I guess is the term. Obviously, a negative vote on a move to approve would be a move to reject, but why not do this straightforwardly instead of doing it in a backward way? And also, we could take, take further debate or discussion from the committee. So I'll recognize whoever wants to talk.
So I just, I have a question. On the, the transportation, where Franklin Tech provides the transportation and with Smith we'd have to provide that, is there any, like, calculations that were done on what the cost would be?
So we already do provide that for, for Smith. We share that, we co-share that with Hadley, including kids. We have students from all four communities who attend Smith Voke, so.
Yeah.
There's not an additional cost because there's empty seats in the bus.
Serena.
So I would, I think my preference at this point, I still have some concerns around this agreement and the, some of the changes that were made there. Well, I appreciate Dr. Morris's attempts to, to bring this into alignment, I think, with where the committee was before. We, I feel it's still not protecting the district enough in its current state.
Yeah.
So for example, there's no mention of, you know, holding either party sort of not liable in case that the contract is terminated. It's not specifically stated in there what happens. So basically, it just says the ARPS ceases to maintain Smith as its school of preference that, you know, the agreement terminates. But it doesn't say if there's any other recourse for them or anything like that. So I would really want to lock that down. And then I think just given the fact that, you know, these conversations oftentimes mean that there's impacts that we don't necessarily understand right away, and not just with the contract language, but obviously, I think with all the different committees. So I, you know, I would actually move to table this conversation for a later date if that's possible. I don't know if you're still entertaining a motion or.
Not after you, not after you offer your comments.
Okay.
Someone else would have to be recognized to do that. Mr. Demling.
I moved to table the school of preference agreement.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions about that? Yes, Mr. Demling?
So, so my main, my main concerns are with the communication piece. Not, not with the way in which Dr. Morris or our committee has conducted ourselves, but, but with, with just the pragmatic effect that it's had. And I feel like we've crossed a lot of Ts and Ds in our eyes in terms of having open meetings and open agendas, and you cited the email and the communications through the elected officials. But, you know, I'm hearing a lot of honest feedback from the community that, that they weren't aware of it. Now, that's, without assessing blame.
Right.
That's the reality. Okay? People can draw their own conclusions about who's to blame for the communications pipeline, but, you know, to take people at their word, and no reason not to, I'm hearing a lot of people who feel like they weren't aware that this decision was a process. That being said, we have a very serious budget cut to look at. And so if tabling this discussion meant that we couldn't consider this agreement this fiscal year in some capacity, I would be concerned about doing that. So I guess I'd want to hear a little bit more about, okay, procedurally, if we table this, and yet it's still possible. Because, I mean, I want to be really upfront with anybody who's watching this meeting or who came on to attend it, you know, we're, we're cutting 1.1 million dollars from a budget. That's, everything in there are things that we don't want to cut. We've had very long, difficult discussions about taking things out, and there have been people, you know, come to meetings with the same level of passion and commitment and, you know. So I want to honor and respect all those communities, even those, those people who aren't here. And so it still might happen that we have to go through this agreement to table this, you know? So, but, you know, this, the, it's, it's the outreach, I guess, you know, that, that is concerning me a little bit in terms of communicating about it.
So, I was going to jump in if no one else, but I'm happy to.
Maybe, but I'll, I'll go ahead.
Okay. So a couple of things. I mean, one, the fact that people are coming today is, I, I think it's pointless to work on assigning blame around communications. You're here tonight, which means obviously you heard before there was a vote. You're here to express yourself before there's a vote, and that's the important thing. I mean, we've been talking about this in our meetings for weeks. We've asked questions about outreach to the public, we've asked about outreach to Franklin Tech. I have, and now I'm going to go back into debate because I suppose my introductory comments. I repeatedly said, I thought it was absolutely astonishing that there wasn't a hue and cry about eliminating an agreement for students to be able to attend Franklin Tech. And I was astonished that there weren't people in Shutsberry and Lever who'd be upset by this. And if I, if you don't mind, Mr. Sullivan, me referencing you, you referenced in one of the meetings the idea that there were multi-generational Franklin Tech families who would undoubtedly feel that it was important for them to maintain continuity and a connection to Franklin Tech. So I've been bothered by this to be from the beginning because there's a lot of things we do in our budget which, which cause significant pain. One of the things we've talked about during the budget process is the question of where are we cutting things that although they cause pain and difficulty, they're not structural in their elements? So for example, eliminating an instructor in science, for example, that's not just a one-year fix. It's actually causing potentially significant ongoing damage to program, departmental programming and instruction. Well, I personally would put a decision around Franklin Tech and Smith Voke in the same sort of bucket because you're talking about changing a long-term set of relationships that we have within our district to educational alternative providers. And also, just as a further point, as the committee's talked about this, I know that this committee has currently formed, but also previous committees, meaning the membership varied at different points, have talked repeatedly about the importance of vocational and technical training as an important pathway for students, young people who live in our district. And so this is something we've been very aware of. So my, my question would be, since I agree with Mr. Demling that there's a bit of a pickle that's created around saying, well, A, we can table it, but then we got to approve the budget. We table it, but then does that mean we have to approve it later? My, my follow-on question actually is a slightly different one. Is $25,000 on a, on a $30 million budget, sounds like almost a rounding error in terms of the town assessments. Can we just add $25,000 to the town assessments, distribute it, and just add back this, not do this?
That's, so the answer is, you're asking on a technical level, I imagine?
Of course I'm asking on a technical level.
Yeah. Okay, just being really clear. Yes, you, the school committee, the regional school committee votes a bottom line dollar amount for a budget, and what's been proposed tonight included this. And we could probably, Sean, might need a little bit of time, but probably if we look at the agenda, the safety will take a while. To redistribute assessments across member towns and what that would be for towns, so you could consider it before you could, would have to consider a vote, like what would the impact be on Amherst, Leverett, Shutsberry, and Pelham?
Can I ask you a further question?
Yeah.
If we tabled this item, does it become more problematic to adjust the budget to include the additional 25,000? What does that mean? I don't know what shaking your head means.
No, I'm sorry, I said, no. I don't think it becomes more problematic.
So how would we then change it later to add an additional 25,000?
Oh, I misunderstood the question then. I thought you meant later in the evening, as Sean's doing.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, because the motion before us is to table this.
Right.
Item, presumably to a future date.
Right.
What I'm saying is if we approve the motion to table.
Right.
Does that mean, does that make it more or less difficult to then do approve a budget that might include an additional $25,000?
I don't think, I don't think it has, I need to think about it for a second before I respond. No, no, I want to.
Do you understand, do you understand?
Now I understand.
But, I mean, Dr. Morris, you understand the question?
Yeah.
My question is, if we vote on the agreement, because I think what Mr. Demling raised the question of, is, does it, I mean, and this isn't what exactly you were saying, but it's what you were implying. Does this become a fait accompli, that because we approve a budget that doesn't include an additional 25,000, that our future consideration of this agreement becomes a bit of a fait accompli? Because then we're forced into this pickle of either we cut 25,000, that we don't know where we're going to cut it from, or we, we approve the agreement and then the question is why are we tabling it? Because the reality is we're faced with the same input we had then. Maybe we'd learn some more, but I'm, this is just the question.
Yeah. No, I understand now. Sorry about that, it took me a second. So I don't have another $25,000, I don't have a solution to your problem in terms of like, oh, if we don't do this, we'll do that. You're being asked to approve a bottom line budget, right, number. I think it's certainly feasible, we could come back at the next meeting in March 20th and say, here are options for you to consider for that. You voted the, the number that the towns need for their warrants for the spring town meeting, and for you to offer input on that. So I don't think, like the fait accompli thing, I think there is time to still work on that aspect. I think I have concerns if we're opening up the entire budget and not just focused on 25,000, if we're like, looking at all 1.1 million dollars of costs. Not that you're suggesting that, I'm just making it, trying to make myself more clear. But I do think you have multiple options. I think you could vote the budget amount that was slated to be voted tonight, come back on March 20th and try to resolve a $25,000 question. You could increase the budget, you know, giving Sean a little time to understand what the assessments would be for each member town and vote a higher budget. I think all those, you have all those options in your discretion.
Okay. Is there further debate? Is there anyone besides, I've talked, you've talked, is there anyone else who wants to say anything? Don't forget, the motion before, I mean, everything's open because we're, the decision we make has cascades, but the motion before us is to table, just to be clear.
Okay, so I'll, I just, I mean, at first I want to say that as committee members, as a committee member, it's extremely helpful to have the public come out. So I really, really appreciate that that happened tonight. It's, you know, it's, I feel like this is a question, we, as you've been saying, we've been wondering sort of what, what the, how, what the response would be, and we're hearing a real response. And that's what we're here for. We're here to, you know, be representing our public and taking that really into consideration as we make decisions. I guess if we're going to table, I think, I mean, you just referred to this, but I think if we're going to table this, we should be clear about what it is that we're going to know more of when we arrive at the table where it sits in the coming weeks, if you will. So let's just, what is it, what is it that we seek before, in order to get there?
Yes. I meant that respectfully.
It was meant to be slightly.
So if there's no one else, Mr. Demling?
So I guess the new variables that I'm feeling tonight that is kind of a new piece of information, that personally, if we have the procedural space to do it, I would like to, is this, this sort of community impact that we've heard this evening from the public comment. We, yes, we've talked about it technically, and multiple members have referenced it. You know, we've talked about the technicality of distance and programs and program, you know, those sorts of things. But, you know, I think this has raised a good point, that when the public comes out, we hear it in a different way, and that takes a little time to process. And I think if I was in the position of someone who is very much against this agreement, I would, I would be upset if the agreement passed. I think I would be much more upset if it passed and I felt like I wasn't even heard, you know? And so it's, tabling, you know, again, I, since before, I want to be very honest, like, tabling means that, you know, we might go ahead with this agreement anyway. We have a very serious fiscal situation that we're trying to deal with, we're cutting over a million dollars. But I want to be able to honestly, be able to look every person in the eye who disagrees with this agreement and say, I heard you, I thought about it, I talked to other people about it, I processed it, and then I made my decision. And I feel like, just personally, I would be more comfortable with a little bit more time, if it's available in a procedural budget, to be able to make that decision. So that's the new thing. I don't think there's going to be any revelatory piece of data that is going to drastically change the calculus, but that's where I'm.
So, yes?
So I think for me, the additional piece of information is about thinking as a committee of how we might be able to add $25,000 to, or to the assessments, or however technically we might think about that. And, you know, one thing that I have not heard is where the member towns are in this question specifically, right? And so we have members of the community that have come here representing their interests and their feelings around their personal experience. We've also heard, as Dr. Morris mentioned before, that members from the different towns have, you know, staked sort of policy positions on the budget and the assessment, and that's where we're drawing a lot of our decision-making tonight for this particular budget. So if we can hear from those elected officials, if we can hear from those communities where they stand in terms of this budget, and if we could add $25,000 in order to ensure that this choice does not, does not go away, that we don't have to make this agreement, then I would welcome that. I would welcome hearing from our member towns where they stand on all of this, because I think that's the missing piece that we don't have here, right? I think, you know, as much as the members of the community may want to push, and we may want to push on their behalf, at the end of the day, it comes up to the member towns to decide where this money is going and, you know, and how that money is coming into this budget. And so I think if tabling this conversation, until we can get a more accurate representation from those towns helps that happen, then that's what I would be in favor of.
Can I ask another, so please.
I may respond too. So for those in the audience, I'm the Leverett representative, and while this could go back to the Select Board and the Finance Committee, I can tell you their answer would be no.
What does, what does no mean?
In terms of raising their assessment. I don't know if any of the other Leverett families have been to those meetings, where we talked about the elementary school budget, we talked about regional assessments, we've talked about all the departments at town, and those meetings have been the hardest I have ever been to. There is not a lot of support for paying for the schools. The elementary school is taking an $80,000 cut, the region's taking 1.1 million. We asked them to raise the tax rate to help pay for this, and their answer was no. So if we think that the towns are going to come back and say, sure, we'll figure out how to spend $25,000 anymore, I think the answer from that town will be no.
So, Ms. Marriott?
I think it gets a little funny, because this is so, this discussion and the decision, and given if we decide to table, we still have to decide what we're doing with the budget tonight. And so what I'm wondering, and this is kind of, again, like the nitty-gritty, the towns have agreed to an assessment method already, and the budget is based on primarily, I mean, at the top level, the guidance we've gotten from Amherst. So if we wanted to raise the budget by $25,000, does that mean, I guess there's, I'm thinking there's a couple of ways we can do it. We can, we can ask Amherst if they're willing to increase their assessment, because they would have to agree to some increase, and then we'd see how it fall out with other towns, which may or may not be affordable. Or we could change the assessment method, where Amherst might stay at the same level, but other towns might pay more, right? Are those kind of our ways forward with the adding $25,000?
Yes.
Okay. So, so we, as a committee, could put forward, I mean, I guess this is my other question. So we couldn't go forward with this, the breakdown that we have, and the assessment method we have, and also then tack on, oh, but these two towns are going to pay more, but not everybody. That is not, that's not legal or whatever, right?
No, Mr. Mangano, you should bring him up.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to turn to him.
So I've been playing phone tag with that person at the state. I've been playing. Sean Mangano, business manager. I've been playing phone tag with a person at the state for probably the last three weeks that can answer that question. That person right now is sort of on a semi-retired basis, so they're only there a couple days a week. I've literally gone back and forth about 15 times with voicemails. So I do have a question into them to, you know, can we sort of increase one town's assessment, not really according to a method, but just have one town pay more, but I haven't gotten an answer on that.
Okay. Is that, so, I just want to go back to another question, because I apologize if I seem thick. And if Mr. Mangano's needed, he should probably hover near microphones if he needs to. So we, for timing purposes, we have in our agenda to vote a budget tonight. I think we need you to do that. If, in a future meeting, even next week, we were, I mean, if we decided to continue with this agreement, then obviously the budget sits as it is. If we decided not to increase this agreement, meaning we approved tabling the item, we bring it up again, and we do not approve it, is it still within our capacity from a procedural basis at that point next week to alter the assessments and alter the budget, so that we can actually approve a higher amount? Because I think, I would be, and I'm saying this out loud, just putting it out there, I'm uncomfortable with the idea that we create a position for the committee, I think it's actually untenable, create a position for the committee where we're saying we're going to come back next week, and our decision is either to approve this agreement, and we'll hear from the public about what they think of that, or we're going to find $25,000 of additional cuts in the budget, having already gone through a difficult process to identify those cuts. So it seems, my personal opinion, is door number three, which is putting the burden on the towns to pay $25,000 more to maintain an historic connection with Franklin Tech, is the only viable solution. It doesn't create a really challenging situation for us. And I think that because the towns were, to be candid, the towns were in different places around how we fund our budget, and there were different members of different towns who came forward around the regional agreement, regional assessment, who were in different places. Some folks were in a much more draconian or conservative position around saying, there's no way you can't afford to cut more out of your budget. I'm telling you, you can. And then there were other folks who were saying, if there's any way we need to find money to pay for budgetary needs, we want to preserve services we care about, we will help you do it. There was definitely not unanimity around that, so I'm not saying that that's the case. But the bottom-line question is, I want to be very clear before we take a vote, what are we actually deciding, and to what extent does it constrain us? So the question again, as I might have said it earlier, is if we choose to table, is there in fact a viable pathway for us to increase the budget and the assessments in a future meeting or not?
I think to Ms. Ordones' point and to what others have shared, that would be a conversation between elected officials. It could be just based on warrant timelines, something that would have to happen on town meeting floors, which can happen. I'm not suggesting it can't happen, but just trying to answer pragmatically your question. So I do think it would take some communication back with the member towns and the elected officials, the member towns, about their flexibility of increasing the regional schools' budget by $25,000 in pretty short order. The question I have is, what's the member towns, elected officials' capacity to get together, to have a meeting, to show official support for these budgets? I've been to Pelham, I've been to Amherst, I think it's Thursday night, for the Finance Committee. I know, as Ms. Kaczynski suggested, or excuse me, shared in Leverett, they've had multiple meetings around the budgets with Select Board and Finance Committee, so I'm just trying to figure out how, in a timely way, those, those stars could align, not necessarily that it works out, but actually that conversations could occur between different groups of elected officials in four communities to consider this request. So I think it's a logistics issue, separate from the, what they would respond, and I, you know, I want to respect what Ms. Kaczynski said about kind of her concerns.
And between you and Sean, is there any awareness of when the warrants are being finalized, so that we know literally what those deadlines look like?
I think Leverett's is first, and it's 45 days from April 28th, which was like, it's this week.
Yeah, it's this week, okay.
And Pelham's in the same boat.
Okay. So that, so the clarity that we have then is that it's actually unlikely we would be able to take a revote of our budget and assessment method even as early as next week?
I think that's accurate, yeah, I would agree.
Okay. Which then, the point B on that would be, would likely, the likely recourse would be then to have amendments offered on the floor of town meetings, if that were in fact what people wanted to do. Okay. So, Ms. Demling?
Yeah, I was just about to say that. In fact, I think it might be good to just give a real, very short 101 backdrop of what we're all talking about here, because not everybody in the world is all wonky on regional assessment methods agreements, right? But it's Amherst, Leverett, Chutesbury, four towns.
Yeah.
So we vote a budget, and you can, please feel free to share if I get something wrong. We vote a budget, and that budget then goes onto the warrant of four individual town meetings. We've, we choose the, we split it up based on who's paying what, based on a lot of agreements that we've, and meetings that we've had with all of the towns over the last several months. So it's not a surprise to anyone. So we've had, we have these four-town meetings, where lots of different finance, Select Board, School Committees all get together, and they say, okay, what is something that we can agree with in terms of how we're going to pay? Those then all get on, and so the deadlines that we're working with, that we just talked about, that it sounds like, you know, we can't kick the can down the road past this meeting, is the town meeting warrants. And then it gets to town meeting, and that's when the towns vote those budgets. Now, at that point, for the budget to increase at all four locations, we'd have to have a vote on the floor of town meeting with whatever rules govern those individual four-town meetings to increase the budget of that amount. So that, that's what it takes. And it's unfortunate that we have, are constrained by these technicalities, but that's the nature of the beast.
Well, warrants got to be approved, right? And printed and distributed in their towns, that's sort of the way it goes. Yes, Ms. Marriott?
So I think, just to follow up on that, I think that, to me then, that means that if we don't, I guess if we're relying on the floor town meeting to increase the budget, then, so we don't vote this agreement, but we're going to increase the budget there, then if we, if that doesn't work, we're cutting, we're cutting elsewhere. So that's the risk I think we're taking, right?
Right.
We're going to cut, we're going to cut something else. We're not going to be able to revisit this, this option at that point.
Right. That is true. Mr. Benino?
When do the cuts make? Are they discussed at town meeting, or the budget?
I think honestly, the cuts would be revisited with the school committee, because I mean, what the town would do is vote a number, and then it would be up to the superintendent, the business manager, and the school committee to be able to rebalance the budget and do the cuts or refund the $25,000. I mean, my, so a couple of things. I mean, one, I think actually the difference between 20 or 25 minutes and 15 minutes or an hour in travel, it's actually pretty considerable. I mean, if it's voluntary and somebody wants to travel that distance, because there's a program that's being offered, then I think that's a perfectly, you know, hey, if a family wants to do it, family wants to do it, what are you going to do, right? But I think as a practical matter, it doesn't make a hell of a lot of sense to actually voluntarily choose to have kids have to travel an additional hour every day beyond what they would otherwise be doing to go to school, especially when it can be hard enough to go to a different school and to learn what they're doing. Second, I was always skeptical of doing this to begin with, because, and I've expressed that skepticism since January. I don't like the idea, because we're in a budget crisis, and I said the same comment a moment ago, I'd say the same thing about art, math, and science or something else, that if we're, if we're cutting core options, I don't love the option of doing it. Having said that, and this is what Mr. Demling was getting at earlier, and the public is like, you don't know it, you should know it. We've been in frankly, a minor, low-level pitched war between the four towns over how to pay for schools for something like the last, was it five years? Four or five years? Something like that. What's the assessment? What's the budget? And some of it's about literally what each town should pay and what's fair for them to pay. And there's some reasonable arguments back and forth on that, I'm not criticizing any of the towns on it. A new, a new element has been introduced over the last, I think, year, and that's, you know, are we paying too much for our schools to begin with, and can't we really just cut anyway? Which is sort of a separate issue than whether, what should my town pay? It's also saying, is it possible we're just paying too darn much for schools? And so there's, there's been a increasingly vocal member, people within our four towns, and there's, I'm talking leadership, I'm talking Select Board, I'm talking Finance Committee, who have increasingly vocally said, I cannot possibly believe you can't cut half a million dollars out of this budget and find a way to do it without causing any particular programmatic pain. So the context of the decision that the committee was being forced to make was in the context of the towns increasingly being highly, highly resistant to us negotiating a pathway where we're finding budgets that can meet a number of different programmatic objectives we have. So no one ever thought this was a, no one ever thought this was a costless decision, or this wasn't going to cause some pain or difficulty. We knew it would. The question was, when you're making a lot of really nasty and terrible decisions that you don't want to make, how do you do so in a way that you can still keep the core mission? So in this case, the core mission in that case was to be able to ensure that students could go to vocational and technical schools. So for our committee, I'm just saying, I'm being blunt about my contribution to debate, and I know the committee itself and the superintendent have heard me expressing skepticism about this since January. And in fact, part of my question that I raised with Mr. Sullivan was, where's, and I'm blaming you, I'm just saying in general, we talked, we literally talked about this, is where's the hue and cry, because I'm shocked that there isn't any. So what we need to do is we need to take a vote on what we're going to do. Personally, I'm just being, again, saying my opinion, I could care less about putting another $25,000 onto the towns. I don't think that's a big deal, and I frankly think if the, I'm being divided, not in one town, I'm saying divided amongst the towns. And I think in all honesty, if the towns are really going to say, we want to either hack $25,000 out of the budget alternately, or B, force kids to go to Smith-Vogue because we don't like this decision, then, you know, let, I'd say let them make that decision. It's a ridiculous thing to do, and I'd say the same thing if we were having to cut a science teacher or cut a special ed teacher or something like that. It's a ridiculous choice for us to have to make. That's my debate, and you can have the floor.
One small question for Dr. Morris and a comment in general. So the question is, so separate from all the regional work, regional agreement, budget deadlines we've talked about, is, are we also facing a similar deadline with Smith-Vogue in order to execute this agreement after which, that's my first type question. And I forgot my comments, so.
It's okay. So, Dr. Morris?
Yeah, I think, so I think two things. One, I can ask that question, but more important to me is that we, I don't want to leave students in a lurch, right? So that's my concern. It's actually, I mean, not that I don't care about Smith-Vogue or the agreement, but to leave students waiting till town meetings that occur in late, mostly in May with the calendar, it's not, it's not that I disagree with anything you said, you know? And, right, what do those students do in the interim of between now and, let's say, Amherst town meeting ends in mid-May, right? That's a long time to wait and not sure, to not be sure about what school you're attending the future year, and, you know, so I'd have to think through, how do we support those students who perhaps apply to multiple VOG schools, and how does that process work? So my concern is much less on the Smith-Vogue side, to be honest, and much more on the leaving students in the middle. And I'm not sure how much of a problem that is, I still have to work through it in, in my head, this is all, it's not an option I'd considered until right now, but that's where my concern goes.
So I don't, I don't feel like I'm getting a sentiment of the committee in terms of what it's wanting to do right now. A blunt instrument is to take a vote, but in all honesty, because this is sort of like a weird sort of nest of potential votes, I'm uncomfortable doing that, because then we might just find ourselves having taken a vote, and then next talking about, hey, what did that vote just mean, and what are the consequences? Which sounds like a bad way to organize business. Mr. Benino?
I find your reasoning compelling, but what does it, how would you vote?
I would. Well, you would personally like.
My, personally, what I would like to do is I'd like to defeat the motion to table, defeat the, not approve the agreement, and then add $25,000 to the budget. I recognize that that's challenging, because, I mean, the weird thing is, and this is something, it's kind of a math question from Mr. Mangano, on a, what it's kind of a math question from Mr. Mangano, on a, what is our overall budget? Thirty million?
It's on the, thirty-one, eight fifteen.
On a thirty-one million dollar budget, and even with the assessments to the town, the twenty-five, twenty-five thousand dollars distributed between four towns, sounds almost like a math rounding error on the existing regional assessments, as opposed to a dramatic, you know what I mean? It's like, it's not moving it by half a percent, it's gotta be minor, or if I'm wrong, I mean, if I'm wrong, tell me, because I, I don't want us to make a stupid decision, especially based on.
I'm gonna use that line, rounding error, when we talk about.
So of the twenty-five thousand, roughly twenty would be to Amherst, and then the other five thousand would be split among the, the three smaller towns.
Okay, so that's an interesting answer. Mr. Demling?
So I'm, I'm compelled by the narrative, I mean, echo, Mr. Manino, compelling, that's compelling, of your narrative of defeating the motion to table and then moving to not go forward with the agreement, and then adding twenty-five thousand dollars to the budget. The thing I would say to anybody who came out here in support of this, for the budget, what this will mean is that we're gonna submit budgets to the towns that are twenty-five thousand dollars more in total, that will be a couple thousand dollars more, maybe, to Leverett, Pelham, and Chootsberry. Please go and pack those town meetings and make your voice heard about what you want and supported in your public school education, and while you're at it, make it, make a statement for your elementary schools and, you know.
Please?
Yeah, and talk to your school committee members about the crisis that's going on there. Again, I don't want to go too far here and, and be critical, but, you know, this stuff really happens in the right way when committees make reasonable and thoughtful, thoughtful decisions is one, but when the community comes out in force and makes its voice heard at these town meetings, which is where the money gets spent, that's, that's where the rug gets the rub.
So I'm just gonna go around the table and ask if there are any further comments before moving to a vote, just because, and people can pass if they want to, so I'm actually gonna call on Mr. Dinsmore. This is putting you on the spot heavily, so you can, you can pass if you want to, but you are in fact here at our table and welcome at our table.
Well, up until Mr. Demling said it, I was gonna say roughly the same thing, that I'm really happy that so many people have come, and especially since so many people are from Leverett, which is where I'm from. And so that'll be very much in our favor if we do end up passing a budget that is twenty-five thousand dollars higher than expected, and we need to get that money from the town.
So.
So my one question is, I believe I heard from the superintendent of Franklin Tech that they could match, that they could do something too, so it may not be twenty-five thousand dollars.
It wouldn't be. We could match that in two seconds. I would not let twenty-five thousand dollars be a divider, we would send the money right to you guys if we had to, if that was the issue, because we'd have to prove that a preferred status was worth twenty-five thousand. I'm not seeing how that even would be, but if it was, Franklin Tech would eat it.
So, thank you. I almost gavelled it, but I'm realizing we need to hear from you, so it's fine. That, I mean, I think the challenge, the challenge, Mr. Sullivan and that, is we don't in fact have, I mean, so two things. One, my assumption is Smith-Vocational and Franklin Tech aren't gonna both offer five percent discounts for a non-exclusive relationship.
Right.
So what that would mean is we would then be entering into an agreement in which we'd now be telling everyone in Amherst, for example, for the sake of argument, you can't go to Smith-Vogue, and you've gotta go to Franklin Tech. And I'm gonna go back, I mean, just, I'm speaking for myself, but I go back to the principle I was raising last January, when I was saying, I'm really, I, I, I'm not comfortable with this, I can get comfortable with this because we need to save money, because now we're forcing, we're closing off options. And so the idea of going the other direction and saying, now we're gonna close off options this way, seems like we could predict another meeting with another bunch of people coming in and saying, you don't understand how valuable this is to me. But anyways, I appreciate that. I'm not trying to debate you, I apologize, it seems like I was doing, I was more saying we're in a pickle, because that would mean another agreement, then we have to vote on the other agreement. Anything else, Ms. Demling?
No.
Ms. Manino?
I'm gonna follow your lead, I'll suggest a course of action.
Uh, Mr. Demling?
I am all set, commenting.
Okay, Skudanski?
I don't think tabling this is a better.
Okay. I've spoken, although I appreciate Mr. Manino making sure that if the town of Amherst is angry at someone, it's gonna be angry at me, so I appreciate that. Uh, Ms. Dennis?
So I, you know, I think my initial motion for tabling was my wanting to not have to make this decision tonight, to have to sign this agreement, and also trying to be cognizant of the fact that we haven't heard from multiple members of the communities and also the towns. And so I am happy to withdraw the motion, and would be also happy to, to say no to signing this agreement tonight. I do think that we, we still need to hear from the towns, we need to hear from the member towns, and I think we still need to have that conversation out in the open. And so as much as we can possibly do to encourage that between now and, you know, future meetings of this committee, but also I think the other school committees and the other elected official meetings, the better we are.
Mm-hmm. Tazza?
I mean, I, I wanna reiterate what I've heard, I think people are, I agree with the track people are on, and to what Mr. Demling said, I think, you know, we go to four-town meetings, we hear from other elected reps, and we've heard another voice tonight. So I encourage that voice to be brought to your elected officials, I really encourage that.
Ms. Marriott?
Yeah, I, I think I'm kind of sure the sentiments have been expressed in the beginning and after the discussion.
Okay, so the motion in front of us is to table, all those in favor of tabling the agreement signify aye by raising your hand. All those against tabling signify nay by raising your hand. The unanimously, motion is rejected. I would entertain another motion, if there's one forthcoming, either to approve or to not approve this item.
I'll make a motion to reject the agreement with Smith being the preferred provider.
Is there a second for that motion?
Chootsberry will second, uh.
So Chootsberry, highly appropriately, Leverett makes the motion, and Chootsberry seconds it. Is there further debate on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of rejecting the proposed agreement with Smith-Vocational, raise your hand signifying aye. The motion carries unanimously, the proposed agreement is formally rejected, which of course creates a to-do list for Mr. Mangano probably for later in our discussion around the school budgets. So by the way, just to be clear, that's, that's done now. We have further, I mean, I'm not, just because you're here, I was gonna say, there's, there's further business on how we reconcile this, and I would echo what previous members of the committee said, other members of the committee said, that if you care about these budgets and what's happening in your towns, your voices need to be heard, because there, we've heard from leaders in your towns, particularly one of them, that we're more than happy to.
More represented tonight.
More represented, it's very well represented tonight, that they would prefer us to just cut the budget, cut it out. So if you don't agree with that, you gotta share that with your town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kids, got kids.
Oh, five-minute recess. We'll reconvene at eight-thirty-four. Oh, I'm sorry. Mike grabbed me, Matt, me and Audra right before the meeting and said, we, we, I, we'd heard the superintendent was coming, and then the immediate word was, oh, actually, there's gonna be a few more people tonight.
This is a discussion on the floor, it's about me, right?
We were begging for people to come forward and say, if you hate this, please tell us you hate this.
This is a natural cycle, it takes a couple months for people to get.
I, I totally agree, and by the way, that's why I wanted to like stop this discussion of who's to blame, because it's like, no one's to blame, that's why they're here tonight.
Yeah.
They were shouting my name.
Oh, you're welcome.
All good.
Thank God we had been talking about this since January.
Yeah.
By the way, and you and Sean are a lot to, they're just credit for that.
Thank you.
Since you got, you know, non-credit earlier for sort of the situation, whatever the obverse credit is. Okay, well, anyway. Well, you know, it underscores for me, it underscores for me that we need more money for our schools, that's what we need.
There's that.
I didn't mean, I just meant I was more to follow.
It's just, it is interesting.
Oh, don't worry. Any, somebody watching is gonna blame you for this, I guarantee you, it's fine.
We could step out of the agenda, and this, you know, this is a criticism, I think, for all sort of public office meetings or things like that, that we assume we put out an agenda and that's enough, right? And then the criticism, too, that people have said, you know, I think quite fairly that, sometimes you hide things, you know, you put things on the agenda and don't publicize.
It could be, it could be.
No, it absolutely could, and, and, no, we're gonna talk about this later, but I guess there are risks going forward. There are absolutely risks going forward, it is unquestionable, there are risks going forward. It is not a costless decision to say we're rejecting the agreement. I mean, I hope, I hope and pray that, that a maximum, and I'm not saying this is a good thing, Dr. Morris, but I'm hoping at a maximum it is, we look at a reserve fund and we find twenty-five thousand bucks that's gonna make, make us much closer next year, but it's, it may not be that, it may not be that. It's not costless.
Well, the region's a little different than mine. Yeah, well, we, well, we vote on both the region and separately the town.
So the region needs three of the four towns to pass the budget, and then all four towns have to oversee the assessment.
That's where the problem comes.
That's where the road is.
Did, did anyone come from Pelham or Chootsberry?
Yes, there was a.
Yeah, we had a Pelham.
At least one Pelham or another.
What about Chootsberry, though?
So you guys at the side of the table, make sure that we, we like angle into the mic. I kept having to like crank up the mics all the way, and then like break the mic, which is really hard when there's like.
Sure.
That's what I'm good for, right? You had to like dial it way down, because I'm like booming into the microphones.
So just hands up, make sure your mic.
Well, in fact, we can, we can, you take that one closer to you on, because since we're missing a member, we can just move the mics.
Oh, that's right, oh, okay, okay, okay. I get my own mic.
Oh, I have two microphones, this is dumb. Here, I have a microphone. I wasn't even noticing that, that is so stupid.
Well, it's usually perfect, but we.
No, if you could do it that way, it's more evenly distributed. Pass the microphones to your right.
To the towns and to the towns. The towns have to pass the budget as a whole number, and then they also have to agree to the assessment method, which determines how much they each pay.
We just recommend.
So what hap, so if they're, whereas they don't come up with the twenty-five thousand dollars, then does it?
Well, it depends how we move forward at the next vote here, we vote for the budget.
Right, depends on the next vote. But I mean, I mean, well, I mean, to be honest with you, it could get, it could get worse, because the, the, the recommendation we were making was for what's called one-fifth of implementing what's called the statutory method. The pure statutory method phased in in one year would have caused even steeper cuts, like another half million or something. I mean, Mr. Mangano could tell us what the specific figure is, and, but it's way more than twenty-five, way more than twenty-five thousand. And so the sort of prayer would be that the worst we get stuck with is trying to find a way to e twenty-five thousand dollars out of our budget somehow, which is still not good. I mean, I just, it's, I mean, I don't know. I mean, the challenge is, well, you heard what I said in the debate, I just can't believe we would make a permanent structural decision around how people are going to their schools and choosing their schools, based on the distribution of twenty-five thousand bucks between four towns. It doesn't seem responsible to me to do that. In the same way that if we were cutting, like, we looked at some of the, just to let you know, in some of the budgetary options we had, among the worst budgetary impacts we had, we were in fact eliminating science teachers and increasing enrollment in science classes.
Guidance counselor.
Guidance counselors, science classes.
The health, the, the health teacher.
The health teacher in middle school, right?
Health teacher programs. So my point is, there were budgetary options we were looking at that our committee also opposed doing, that we're hacking into the exact areas that we're saying we did not feel wise as a school district to do.
It's not always this fiery. It's usually torrent.
Are we good? Are we good? Mr. Demling, can you join us?
Put your snacks away.
Or share them.
If I need to.
I didn't have time to make cookies this time.
Okay, that's fine.
What kind of cookies do you eat?
Another thing with your whispering is I like.
What kind of cookies do you eat?
I'm happy to go.
I'm a big fan, I hope you'll raise it.
Excellent. Calling back to order, the meeting, we're actually gonna resume our, our, our regular agenda. I'd like to forego subcommittee updates unless someone's got a burning issue they want to just chair. If you do, you do. You're looking at me, I know there is one, because you're looking at me like there is.
One minute, give us one minute.
Okay, do you want that one in it now or later? Okay, then here it is.
Sorry. Okay, so superintendent evaluation subcommittee got together, addressed what was being talked about last time in terms of coming up with a menu of options for evaluation timelines, as well as, as well as a proposal for a recommendation for this year. So coming attractions, at the next meeting, we'd like to have it on the agenda to look at those, and also Ms. Marriott came up with a nifty graphic around calendar and timeline to, to just look at different options. So you'll all be getting this in the coming days, which you can peruse, and then we can have discussion about it next time.
Great. Are there any other burning subcommittee topics? Seeing none, we neglected to put the superintendent's update on the agenda, so I am ceding the chair's report time for the superintendent to provide an update.
Thank you very much. So I think you have it in front of you. Two things I'll say before we start, so as the students no doubt know, who are here in the audience, there's no school tomorrow because of snow. But I also want to note that for our Amherst School Committee meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow night is now on Wednesday night. So I'm just saying that out loud, I know it's a regional meeting, and yet it's an area of interest for some people, so sorry to use the stage, but, you know, figured.
You got the microphone.
Right, absolutely. But on to some more fun updates and really meaningful updates. So on Friday, we had our Equity and Diversity Professional Development. I was planning to do a whole thing because of time I'm not going to, read down all the events, it was in the Friday update, or actually it was Thursday update last week, that went to all families. I want to thank, we had a student here who participated in one of those breakout sessions, so thank you very much, appreciate it, it was great and very well received. It was incredibly powerful day, and I think the two things that were novel about it, one was the breadth of offerings. So more typically in the past, we've talked about, you know, everyone does, four hundred people in a room, and it was, you know, everyone gets the same thing, and for the folks who were able to participate, who was our professional staff, clerical staff, and business office staff, and some other staff members, not everyone works on curriculum days, the feedback so far has been incredibly positive, and part of it's that it was differentiated by interest level. I think the second thing was just there were multiple sessions that involved high school students. I mentioned, you know, one of them, but there were multiple ones. And there were also multiple sessions led, it was primarily led by faculty members, it was faculty members with expertise in an area, and sometimes not even expertise, like people who are trying things out, and saying, here's something I'm trying, here's what's going well, here's what I'm still, you know, still working on. And, and that felt really different to folks, as opposed to everyone being in an auditorium for a couple hours in a more passive activity. And so really, who deserves thanks is Tori Cunningham and Tim Sheen, because they really put it all together, and deeply indebted to them for the day, and we continue to receive incredibly warm feedback. I had more to say, but I won't, but I'll go on to Wednesday is an early release day, and Jessica Minahan, who is the author of The Behavior Code, she's gonna be with us doing sessions both in the morning and the afternoon, morning for some of the mental health folks, afternoon more open, because it's an early release day. And I think as someone who read her book a little while ago, so it's not super fresh on my mind at the moment, but it really is about how to take non-punitive approaches to discipline, understand what's lying underneath, what's contributing to students who are struggling with their behavior, and what interventions are more helpful. So trying to get out of the kind of zero tolerance mindset that the schools were in, maybe ten fifty, not ours, but in general, a while ago, and really getting much deeper and really getting much deeper into what are the underlying factors that are contributing to students who are struggling to maintain themselves in school, and then what are the strategies that can interrupt that. So we're really excited about having her here. I'm going to skip number three, I'm going to go to number four, which is happy to celebrate the Pioneer Excellence, Pioneer Valley Excellence in Teaching Awards. The award ceremony, I think, is next month, it's either April or May, but I think it's in late April. So at the regional level, Tiffany Thibodeau, who you saw, actually, she was one of the folks who presented about math all the way back in December, a very short evening that you may recall. And Rich Eckert, who's taught at the high school, he's also taught, when I was at Cracker Farm, when I came to Cracker Farm, to understand better early childhood and younger students' math skills to then contribute to going back to the high school, which is, I think, one of the neater experiences I've had, is working with Rich at elementary, seeing him go back to the high school. And you all know this, because I shared it, but the policy that this body passed last year about food service collection was labeled, listed as the model policy by the Massachusetts Law Reform Institute in a long report about food service and stigmatizes students around income and food. So congratulations, it's just a really large honor, it's a very major institution, so I wanted to share that out loud. And, um, yeah, I'm going to, I have to, I'm skipping some, I know because of time, but the musical, which I wasn't able to see, but I continued to hear, including members of this body, just incredible reviews of, ironically, I was, my name was mentioned in turn of snow days, and like, they didn't know that when they were planning it, but like, we've had this rash of delays and slow can, snow cancellations, so maybe I should blame John Bechtold for all the weather. Actually, that's a good approach, I will. But, but, but really, it was wonderful, and I heard, you know, just great things, and I was tired of the family this weekend, so I wasn't able to attend. But congratulations to the students and to Mr. Bechtold for the work. Oh, no, I forgot one, and it's important, sorry. So a couple months ago, two months ago, maybe, there was a sabbatical request that was not supported by this body, and it was about spending a semester about a museum that was opening in Montgomery, and that the Equal Justice Initiative was creating, and so I wanted to follow up on that as an update. So Mr. Sheen met with the teacher, we worked with her, and tried to get at what she wanted, and there's actually an opening, it's April 26th and 27th. Peace and Justice Summit involves incredibly high-level speakers, Michelle Alexander, Anna Duvernay, Al Gore, Gloria Sinem, Irene Wright Edelman. And they have a whole set of experiences, both educators as well as for community members, about the history of winching, the history of the South, and how to move towards peace and justice. And so we've worked with that teacher to be able to attend that, and actually worked in the summer to integrate what she learns into the course curriculum that we discussed in January for the next school year. So just want to thank you all for, for tasking me with that, and I really want to thank the teacher for coming up with a creative way, and fortunately, a particularly wonderful event that's planned. It's the grand opening of the museum, I should say, I don't know if I was explicit about that. So I just wanted to follow up on that, because, you know, that was something that committee felt really passionately about, and I think we've come to a resolution that'll be strong for future learning, and then will also impact our students in years to come. That was too late to make the update, so it's not.
Are there any, any questions for the superintendent or others? So we're back on our main business, as mentioned, and luckily, I think everyone was here for our earlier item. So rather than apologize to you for the fact we're getting this to this so late, I think you all know that we were dealing with before had a tremendous amount of public interest. I only say that because, I mean this sincerely, coming into this meeting, I couldn't imagine anything that would have more public interest in terms of the number of people showing up and just the intensity of the dialogue than our first item on school safety. And just to let people know, because sometimes, as with the previous item, these things are a little bit opaque to the community to know. The, the items that are being discussed, sort of the general discussion of school safety, the policy and management around the March 14th walkout, as well as supportive, the item says supportive companies that work with the NRA, but really the issue is, question of how do we approach as a matter of school committee policy and district policy, an interaction between those proponents of what they perceive as the Second Amendment versus those people who'd like to regulate gun ownership. These things are, came from our committee members themselves, they, they view this as intensely important and of great interest. And so I'll, I want to have the committee members obviously speak for themselves. But the point is, there's been intense interest on our part to bring this topic up, as well as also a great moment within the community to do so as well. So with that, if there's anything anyone else in the committee wants to say immediately, I'll entertain that, otherwise I'll throw it to the superintendent to introduce the item. Get it over to you.
So I think I'm just going to start by talking about a general discussion of school safety, like, in the order of the agenda, so I'm not going to necessarily talk about the walkout. I think as I'm understanding.
I'm offering you to handle this however you like.
Okay, I think it might make sense to do it that way, because I think the walkout, supportive companies that work with the NRA, and the general discussion of school safety are related, but not the same thing. So we can see how the conversation flows, but I prepared kind of comments for each, but I'll just start with the general discussion.
And we'll, and reiterate again, by the way, the end of this item will allow for public, will actually entertain and welcome public comment, if you're listening.
So, um, so I think, let's talk about that to one of the principals the other day. We were talking about how to manage dual realities. So on one hand, there's no, unequivocally, we want to honor the victims of gun deaths, both in schools and out of schools. And I think it's important that we've received feedback, I've received feedback with concerns about school safety, and I've also received feedback that that's really important. And we have young people who are facing violence in their lives, in and out of school, and it's, it's a larger issue than school safety. It's about what are we providing, what's, what level of safety we're providing young people in our country. And so I want to emphasize that point, because I'm going to be mostly talking about schools, and I think the critique of that, I take really seriously, that I mostly talk about school safety. And not necessarily, fortunately, in this community, but in other communities, school safety is one aspect of a much broader net of real safety risks that kids face on a day-to-day basis, when they're in school, when they're not in school. So I really, it's good for me to do, to hear that feedback, and I've done a lot of thinking about it. And I also want to say, right, the dual reality is, right, one tragedy is too many to happen at school. There's no question about it. Schools end up, right now, are incredibly safe places, both here and elsewhere. They're much safer than the private places such as homes that people live in, and much safer than public places such as malls. And there's no reason that, there's not a reason to avoid being vigilant and focus on safety, because I'm a school superintendent, I don't run a mall, I don't run one home theoretically, not really. It's all a myth. And, and nothing for me and our principals is more important than school safety. So I do want to contextualize that, because what I find is, when I talk about school safety more generally, it makes, it gives the perception of something that I believe our schools are unsafe and I don't believe our schools are unsafe. So I, I want to just say that at the outset. And, you know, from a data perspective, violence in schools have actually, has actually gone down since the 1990s. And again, the only acceptable number of school violence incidents is zero. So I don't want to portray that as negative, but I think it's helpful to look at historical data and where we sit. I also want to say, I've not seen, talking to some other principals, including those who are here, a local response to other tragedies is the same way as we do to the one in Florida a couple weeks ago. Oh, actually, a month ago, uh, just about a month ago. I think there's many reasons why, why that is, but in terms of the number of emails, phone calls that I've received, and unfortunately, I've been in this role or other roles when other high-profile tragedies have occurred, it does feel different this time around. And so we've done a lot of soul-searching and thinking about, how do we continue to support, and as we always do, our approach to safe schools in a context where people are legitimately concerned, and people have shared with me that they're scared. And that's, I think, our challenge of how to respond to that in a way that's appropriate, that's measured, that's consistent with best practices, that's not reactionary, that's proactive, in a time where the uncertainty that people are feeling about the most precious possession they have is very real. And that's, that's our challenge. On the prevention front, you've seen a lot of dialogue nationally and locally about mental health supports. I'm glad to say that historically, our schools have supported incredibly more mental health supports in our schools than the national average. The national average is one guided, one counselor, excuse me, one school counselor for 400, for every 482 students. Our numbers are generally more than double, better, twice as good as that average. And depending how you parse it, whether you're just school counselors or adjustment counselors, quite a bit better than twice as good as that. Could we use more? Sure. Do our counselors have case loads that they'd like it to be smaller? Absolutely. But when I compare ourselves to what the norm is, I'm very proud about our communities, that we've invested and there's been support for having counselors. Not every elementary school has guidance counselors, and I know we're talking secondary, but I'm going to, you know, refer a little bit. We had discussion here about budget, and we talked about middle school guidance counselors, and we heard that feedback and trying to, to make, make that happen. And on the prevention front, you know, I continue to feel that the, and the police department agrees, having an adult who knows each and every child, and having each and every child know that they have an adult, they can share their, their thoughts, feelings, and occasionally struggles with, is the best prevention we have of making sure that our school continues to be a safe environment. And our students tell us that all the time. I mean, recently, the, Ms. Cunningham was in a group with students, and that was the clear message from our high school students, was the big thing is making sure that students have that connection with at least one adult, obviously more is better. If they're feeling unsafe for themselves, unsafe for others, that they have someone they can go to. Our approach has consistently been also to make improvement to our systems over time. We continually gather feedback from drills we do, safety walks, we itemize areas of need, and we prioritize them, and we try to resolve them as quickly as we can. And this work is continual, so if we're talking about this five years from now, I expect to have five years of things we're doing differently than we are right now. And we'll have five years beyond that of more things to do as we continue to improve our systems. So just going back, and this was shared in the newsletter, I shared with the community, we practice annual safety drills at all our schools. I was hired in this district in 2001, that was not the case in 2001. We didn't have badges, we didn't have swipe cards, we didn't have, doors were open all the time when I, when I started teaching in this district. I think it's also important to note that all our drills are done, understanding the social-emotional needs of students. And so at the secondary level, that means the guidance counselors, the adjustment counselors, other staff members who know that drills are going to be challenged for certain students, do preventative work and proactive work beforehand to do that. I know there's some examples that have been floating out in, in major publications, I don't mean in blogs and social media, about schools taking really radical approaches with students. And our approach has been consistently been that we want students to know what to do when, in reasonable ways, and we also want students to feel comfortable and safe in their, in our school environment, and we, we try to balance those two things. And I think we've been able to do that successfully. The feedback we hear from our students is that the drills are helpful, or they're ho-hum about it, and it's like, oh, well, it's kind of like the bus evacuation drill, we have to do it a couple times a year, and we get on and we get off. And again, going back to the mental health piece, they're our best conduit to how students are feeling about that. They're also involved in all the safety teams that all of our schools have, we're involved in the planning of drills and the execution of them. I mentioned safety walks, those are incredibly helpful, because it's one thing to do the drill, it's another thing to walk around the building during a normal school day and see what doors are open and what doors are closed, right? During a drill, everyone's on their drill behavior. When it's a normal, it's a Tuesday, not tomorrow, obviously, there's no school, it's a Monday, and it's 9:45, and a principal walks around the building with the facilities director, a police officer, or both, and just normal classes going on, that's a much more accurate reflection of where our safety strengths are, and then where some challenges are. And we itemize lists after safety walks of what went well, what we saw as positive, what are challenges, and then we make an itemized list of what to take on. And that happens every year, and one would think, and Mr. Jackson's been doing this for a long time, and one would think that after a while, you just, like, you get to the list and all the checkmarks are in the right place, and the reality is, you have different staff, you have different structures, and there's always things to work on. But I think the thing that I want to emphasize is that we're a learning organization as it relates to this, we continually work that way. I mentioned that our, you know, our best defense is a well-trained staff, and we continue to work on that. One example is the Alice piece, which we'll probably be talking about a little bit later. We've had presentations about Alice from the police department, I want to say that was on the last academic year. I don't think, was it this fall? I think it was the last academic year. You know, so that went on last year at the high school, we've integrated that in the middle school, with just a training two weeks ago, 28th, I think it was, for faculty, not for students, but for faculty, on the early release day. And the feedback I continue to hear from faculty is that it gives, equips them with tools that makes them feel more confident. And what we know is, people, when they feel more confident to take actions, no one knows in a real crisis situation how people act, but the evidence is that when people feel more confident that they have strategies and tools and are empowered to make decisions, that's a better example. That's a better model than the opposite model, which is sort of what, what historically schools have done with that. Additionally, and this was in the letter as well, we've worked with Dewey Cornell, including last Friday, the days are getting a little, no, two Fridays ago, two Fridays, last Friday was the PD around Equity and Diversity. We had a number of staff trained in 2014, Dewey Cornell has been hired by the Boston Public Schools, by the Sandy Hook Promise, because they partnered. And so we had a number of staff members go that morning who weren't employed in the district or didn't get trained in 2014. And really, that's around protocols or on risk assessment. So when a student says X, Y, Z, how do we distinguish from a student who's struggling from a real risk? And what Dewey Cornell's system has helped us with is having tools and protocols, so that we have a structure to understand the difference, be able to assess risk, communicate with families, and we have highly, our mental health folks in general, that Ms. Fay is here, and she's been trained by Dewey Cornell as well, so we have other staff who have been trained, in addition to mental health staff. But it's really giving us the strategies and tools we need to be able to accurately assess situations, support students, and keep the school safe. In terms of next steps, oh, I want to say two other things that we've done the last couple years, we have the Bright program, and I don't want to project that students in Bright are risk, that's not at all what I'm saying, but it's around additional mental health support for students. I've heard from, directly from students who are in the Bright program about the difference that made in their lives on the mental health front. And we also started this year with your support of the restorative practices, again, trying to emphasize, how do we make sure that every student has an adult they connect with, and they can share their concerns with? And that's another adult who has a more unique role in the school, who's able, I've also seen that this year, able to work with students in pretty unique ways. And there are next steps. So I mean, I think the three buckets that we talk about with next steps, one is the infrastructure, which is a harder next step for us to take. So one of the pieces of feedback we heard differently in different schools is the PA system. Can we ensure that the PA system is audible in quiet moments and loud moments in every nook and cranny of our schools, and also outside? So we itemized that list, shared it with Mr. McPherson, because we met two weeks ago as an administrative team. For him to then go back and look and make adjustments on PA systems, because that's our primary tool of communication, and I, we couldn't get, across our pre-K to 12 district, we're not at 100% in every situation where everybody can hear. So that's one of the main tasks Mr. McPherson's working on. We have a problem with our middle school entry, for those who've been in the middle school, which is pretty much everyone, I imagine, for some reason or other, that when you enter the front doors, we do have a swipe system, but the stairs are before you go through the office. So probably a lot of you in AMERS have heard about the challenges of Fort River, while with the entry, at least there aren't stairs that get someone out of visibility very quickly. So it's something we have to explore. At the high school level, and we're talking about this in the middle school level, we've, but we have integrated at the high school level a system, electronic system that allows staff members to communicate with each other and the police department digitally, so if there was a true crisis, there can be communication that goes on, because you can't bank, even though what I said about the PA system, one cannot bank that the PA system is going to be functional in the middle of a crisis. So it's another mechanism by which staff members in the police department can be communicating in real time. So we just started that out and getting our feet wet this year on that, but it's really trying to figure out, what are our systems to communicate if there really was a crisis? The second bucket of work is on staff and faculty training. So one of the things I heard directly from high school faculty in terms of response to Florida is, yeah, we got trained last year in Alice, do we need to review that? Do we need to come back to that? You know, we had a lot of training last year, and that's something Mr. Jackson talked about with the faculty on Friday last week. Middle school Alice, we've competed, completed the, the training drills, from the faculty perspective, and what does that rollout look like with students who are younger? And we're still working on the mechanics, and then the content of that. One of the basic things the police department tell you, and I have met with the chief of police of AMERS and our lieutenant Johnson, who's our liaison, is when there are people in the building not wearing these or a visitor badge, just saying, how can I help you? Right? So that's a simple, cost-free way, and from the police department perspective, there's almost nothing, and I want to, speaking too broadly. almost nothing, and I wanna, speaking too broadly, is incredibly useful mechanism if people are really asking, can I help you? Right? When someone is a visitor and we don't know who they are, can we train ourselves? It's uncomfortable to do, to say that, particularly if we're gonna say it to someone, we have to say it to everyone. So it might be the person, me, if I'm walking in the building and I'm not wearing this, they might know who I am. We have to get to the place where no sticker, no badge, very pleasant question, how can I help you? So some of this is staff training, also about entry to the building. So when we have our clerical staff and someone's coming in, again, if I'm coming in and I'm not, I mean, I swipe in, but if I forget my swipe, it should be, you know, can you help me with, what business do you have at the school? What do you, you know, in a very pleasant way, but getting away from the automatic buzzings because I know that person. And so that's something that we have to do more staff training on. The last, the last bucket of work is sort of consult, the feedback we get from our local police department. So one example is our name change. So we have historically used shelter in place to be our most dire phrasing and lockdown to be, we're concerned, but we're not at a crisis place. The rest of the state, so those were identified a long time ago by the Amherst Police Department, these are the terms to use. In the interim time, the state police and most districts now use the opposite nomenclature. And we've had lots of conversations with police over many years, the Amherst police, and they felt like, well, you know, they were concerned about changing and confusion it would cause for both the community, but particularly for staff. And in my conversation, week and a half ago at the police department, they're at a place where they really feel like we need to change those by the beginning of the school year next year, that we need to have the nomenclature that lines up with the state police, so if there was a situation, that there's not a translation moment that anyone has to have. And they were very clear with us that they only recommend doing that if we can spend effective time to do it, right? The last thing they want is that our staff are confused. It's a bigger problem if our staff are confused than if they need to communicate that with the state police. So we're working with them on what a timeline for that is, but what I would say is when students come back in August next year, that change will have happened. You know, we're trying to figure out, do we have the mechanics and the time and the energy to the police? Can they support us to make the change this spring? Or is it, would it be counterproductive? Because it's gonna, people aren't gonna remember it because it's mid-year and towards the end of the school year. So we're working with, actively working with the Amherst Police Department as well as the Palmdale Police Department, Palom, on that name change. I know our partners in Schutzbach and Leverett feel very strongly about this because they use the similar nomenclature as the state police. And it's a question I frequently get for students from Leverett, we get from students and parents from Leverett Elementary and Schutzbach Elementary, when they come here and all of a sudden, like, the words are different and it doesn't make sense, because why would it? Right? It's, you know, we're still functioning as the same district. So we continue to work with our local police departments on that. I will say I've got a range of feedback from the community, ranging, one thing that no one has recommended to me is arming teachers, so I wanna be really clear on that. It's not just my opinion, I've not received one email, one phone call, and I would guess the number of emails and phone calls that I've received are in the twenties or thirties. Not one person has suggested that's, that, lots of people concerned about it, don't do that, recommended school committee not to do that, but no one has suggested that's a good idea. And I know that's out in the national discussion, so I wanna be super clear that no one is suggesting that. I think the range has been from, keep doing what you're doing, if you're really safe, why don't we have a school resource officer? Lots of, almost, most school districts in western Massachusetts, high schools, anywhere near our size, have school resource officers. Again, I'm not suggesting that we do that. Tonight, I'm just sharing the feedback I've received from the community, some questions about infrastructure changes, entry procedures, dismissal, arrival, those are the types of feedback I received, but I think the overwhelming quality of the feedback has just been real fear and concern, given the events that are, continue to happen around the country. And what I try to do, and our principals have done a fantastic job doing, is both acknowledging people's feelings, emotions, and the reality of them, and trying to share what we do and what we're, kind of like modeling what tonight is. Here's where we are, here's what we do, we're looking at all suggestions, please share them, we'll consider them, and we're gonna work with our law enforcement officials on the best approaches to ensuring the safety of all of our students. Sorry, that was long-winded, perhaps a little more than I wanted, but it's a big topic and I'd love to share.
It's a huge topic. And I think your beginning of saying, hey, why don't we cut these things into three bites, is now a dead certainty, because that was long enough that we really need to pause and give the committee an opportunity to absorb it, ask questions, and make any comments that they'd like to make, Mr. Manino?
A parent comes to school in the car, they drop a student off at the curb, how does the student gain access to the building? Just walk through the door?
So, so I just, I need to know what school, what time of day?
Right, high school.
High school, normal arrival time? Or you're talking like they come at ten o'clock?
Both.
Okay, sure, so normal arrival time, and actually, Mr. Jackson, do you wanna answer that question? If you don't mind?
I don't mind at all. So we pay someone to be here at seven o'clock in the morning to staff the main entrance, and that's the only door that's open in the morning. Every other first floor, first floor door is locked. And that person, I think Abigail and Jack can bear me out on this one, knows literally everybody. And he is, I think he's our software, like, he filters everybody out as well as greeting everybody. So there's eyes on one door that everybody files through. Pressure to open two doors, we keep only one door open. If it's later in the day, then like in all the schools, they're outfitted with a buzzer or an intercom system. You hit the buzzer, there's a ping that goes off on the secretary's desk, multiple secretary's desk, they can see your picture, they can buzz you in and give you instructions about what to do next.
Yeah, this is another nuts and bolts question that I've wondered many times. So you go to the door, you get buzzed in, there's somebody right behind you, whether a student or an adult, and it's polite to hold the door. So I've often wondered, because I recognize that, you know, all the schools wanna be so welcoming, but I also sort of want someone to say, you can't come in because you haven't been buzzed in.
Right. So the secretaries are alive to that, but the next layer of protection is that we have someone who staffs the main entrance consistently throughout the day. So when people come in, like, there's a temptation, because they're looking right at the guidance office and there's lots of guidance office traffic, people wanna bypass the main office, not sign in, and go right to get the guidance. He's in a position to intercept people and send them back in, so they have to sign in. So he would also be the person with eyes on the front door, that if somebody was doing the follow-the-leader thing, he could intercept that. And interrogate would be the wrong word, but ask them what their intentions were and direct them to the right place.
My question was, you know, you have, and you always have a list of things that you would like to be better, and, you know, given our recent discussion about our budget, does our budget support the necessary improvements that happen on a regular basis here to first teacher and staff and student safety?
So I think we do well on the training piece. I think the infrastructure piece, you know, I was pretty explicit about the middle school entry as being designed before school safety was considered an architectural work on schools. And so that's a harder fix. And so I think from a staff training point of view, I think our capacity is high. I wanna compliment the Amherst Police Department. They are incredibly, like, you know, I called school, the chief of police, our lieutenant, to like, tell us when you wanna meet, this is after Parkland. They come into our schools, they do, I think, an outstanding job of training our faculty and staff. So the human side, the human capital side, I think we do very well. I think our infrastructure side is where we have a larger challenge and there aren't inexpensive solutions to some of the challenges that we face. So does that give you?
Yeah, like, long-term, what does this committee need to look at to support, to be able to improve those situations with the helpful information going forward?
Yeah. And just a note on that, when we talk about the building use study, which was, there was capital money assigned to, certainly, I'm interested in not just who goes where, but also how does that feel and are there solutions that we're not thinking of for some of the safety conundrums that are infrastructure-related, that we don't have logical in-house solutions to be able to manage? Does that resonate with, sorry, turn to the principal?
I was just wondering, I think you mentioned that you were pursuing or considering training, more training for teachers who have already done the Alice training. Have you considered at all doing more training for students? Because like, we have, okay, I was just wondering, because I myself, I think, was absent when we did the training, and I don't remember doing it this year. And I was just wondering, is that a course you're interested in pursuing?
So I think, I think one of the things, as Jack, is the time of the year, right? So we're down the last three months of school. So a parallel is, should we change our terminology when we're three-quarters of the way through the school year, or should we start to lay the groundwork and do that in September? So for me right now, and we talked about this with the faculty on a Friday, I said, I think that, given the limited amount of time and all that's happening in the last three months of the year, what I would, what I would invest in and double down is do it a refresher with the adults, right? And then try to think about what it would mean to get better with the students, but that focus would be in September. I could be talked out of that right now, given all things considered, right? That's where my focus would be.
So is there other, other follow-up on this? As I say, otherwise we'll move on to the next item, Mr. Devlin.
So it sounds like, you talked about the entrance to facilities challenge, that so tracking from the entrance to the office is one of the, you're, you also mentioned that most schools our size have a school resource officer? So I guess, could you talk a little bit about why we don't? And is that just a budget issue or is that a design philosophical issue or?
Can you de-euphemize?
Yes.
That seems like a euphemism for something.
Yeah. So a school resource officer is essentially a police officer who works full-time in a school. And so there's a wide range, right? So there's some who have all the things with them, like, literally in terms of firearms that a police officer would typically have. There are other schools that have a school resource officer without some of those other things. So it's a wide berth of what schools, how schools function with a school resource officer. I think to my knowledge, in our local area, Gilmontague is the other school that does not have a school resource officer, but Hadley does, which is a much smaller school, North Hampton does, East Hampton, so our neighboring schools that have decent-sized high schools and some that have smaller. Long before my time, I wanna say, I'd have to look, I think it might be before Mr. Smith Moreland's time, at least on the committee, it was a very long school committee meeting, I believe one to two in the morning, actually in Schutzbach, they used to rotate where the school committee meetings happening on this very question. And it was much more philosophical than it was financial at that time. And I don't know, I would suspect that this would be a conversation, if the committee wanted to have it, that would have elicited very strong feelings from the community both sides. And I'm not, I'm not, my goal is not to start that now, just to share the feedback I've received, and certainly the committee's will to do as you wish, but I don't think, it wasn't like we had the position, it was cut because of budget or, you know, anything like that. I know our police department has talked about it, they're interested in it, and there's a state law that was passed a couple years ago that we'd have to rely on the state police because we don't have a school resource officer. And I can share more information if the committee would like to come back to that conversation in more detail.
Does anyone have anything further to add on that topic?
So while you were explaining, and thank you for the thorough review of all that, I think, you know, the infrastructure problem that you identified for the middle school in particular, but I know that exists in pretty much all of our schools to a certain degree, is one that, you know, we obviously don't have an easy solution for. I would think that at some point, we should have a conversation around maybe some creative ways to address that. And so if it's, you know, putting somebody, you know, as Principal Jackson mentioned, that is greeting people at the door at every school, some other way of ensuring that, you know, there are eyes and ears at those entry points at all times, because I know I myself have walked in sometimes and, you know, it's, I expect that and want that for our community, at the same time recognize that it's, you know, it's a different time and that we have to be very careful. So I think just coming up with some sort of plan that allows for, you know, the fact that the infrastructure is limiting in some ways, but that we can probably come around and find another solution. The other thing that I wanted to say is, you know, the restorative justice, coming back to that and the importance of a restorative justice program in not just our high school, I think also in our middle school, right? Thinking about ways that we can incorporate, you know, student-led power initiatives to help their fellow students in times of crisis. And I think especially with the most recent tragedy that happened in Parkland, it's become very clear, or at least it's now, given the context of where we are, the zeitgeist of people's understanding around toxic stress and adverse childhood experiences, that, you know, parents greeting parents, greeting family members, greeting students, don't necessarily wanna hear about the shooter as somebody who experienced something terrible in his life. But nonetheless, that happened. And I think that it benefits all of us as a community and a society to think about the ways that we could, you know, put these interventions in place early and often so that young people in particular, one, it's, you know, the opportunity, it's having the access to the guns, we wanna limit that. And then the second thing is making sure that they have caring, adults caring students, you know, people in their immediate circles that are watching out for them and that are taking the steps necessary to ensure that those tragedies aren't repeated. And so I think, you know, as much as we can, thinking through in the future as a committee and as a community, about how we reinforce those types of programs and look for other ones maybe that are even better, right? And I think I've addressed with the chair and with the superintendent previously, my concerns about some of the current policies that we have in place, desensitizing teachers and desensitizing students, because the drills, you go through these drills and it just makes you feel like a victim, it makes you feel like you're, you know, going through this process, and much like the bus evacuation, after a while, you stop caring about it quite as much, right? And so we go through these cycles over and over and over again where something terrible happens, people feel awful, you know, things happen, to move and try to change things a little bit, but there's nothing in place, or very little in place, to ensure the safety net, that to prevent these kinds of tragedies happening in the future. And so I think, you know, our ability here is to think about our budgets and to think about the programs that we're implementing, and hopefully putting those kinds of programs in place that can actually help catch those kids when they are falling through the cracks, when, you know, there's the warning signs that are coming up, when there's the conversations happening, but also just the intense anger or sadness or the other emotions, because it's not always just mental health, right? We wanna put everybody into this block of, you know, it's a mental health problem, but it's not always a mental health problem. It's not that these, you know, these kids are being, you know, that they would be evaluated by a psychiatrist or psychologist and said that there's something mentally wrong with them. In fact, many of them are probably fairly normal and are, you know, going through these other things that are, you know, exerting forces on them. So I think the more we can think about that as a community, about how do we put these programs and interventions in place on a regular basis, and I actually think we have a lot of that here, which is, makes me feel better as a parent, also makes me feel better as a community member, but it doesn't mean that we're perfect, and I think we still have a long way to go. So, you know, I think for next year, I would love to have a deeper conversation around how, you know, restorative justice and other similar programs can actually benefit this conversation around safety in our schools, you know, in the future.
Just briefly, just two comments, one to that one and one actually back to Miskin's and Sue Quam about budget, because I neglected to mention something. So I think that's really helpful feedback. I think another thing I wanna, I should have mentioned more explicitly is when I talked about mental health supports, that's for all students, and that's about affecting the school climate and culture. So it's not, you know, it was a really helpful reframe, so I appreciate it. And restorative justice is a good example of something that, like, because you're participating, that's not because anything's wrong, it's actually because we wanna promote a healthier school climate for all students. And I think that's the kind of thing, the work that we're talking about. I think in terms of budget, I think the one other thing that the Amherst Police Department recommended to take seriously over the next couple of years is to perhaps ask for a full safety analysis from, for all of our buildings. So I think, again, I mentioned that we could, we've made perhaps a little bit of that into the building use, but there are places, and actually, some folks in the Amherst Police Department are getting trained in this and they can help us a little bit with it, but like, a really top-to-bottom, here's where your schools are. Because of the Amherst Elementary Building Project, I was able to work with a safety firm, and I'm not saying they're good, bad, whatever, but it was, it was my first experience working with a safety firm. They built, they were the safety consultants on the school in Sandy Hook, the new school in Sandy Hook. They were involved, because they do schools in the New World Trade Center. So- So just the things that they were thinking of were different than the things that frankly we think of. And so I think that's another financial piece, not even of doing anything, but actually having a firm come in and do this. And I'm trying to ascertain what the price would be and if there's places in next year's budget that we can do that separate from an ad, being the prior conversation inclusive. But I do think knowing what the problems are from experts in the area would help us to have different conversations in the future. So I apologize, I neglected to say that one here.
So one hates to move on, but we probably should move on. One of the things I'd, I'd like to leave this discussion with though, is, so depending on what we're talking about, we either have a heck of a lot of people showing up at our meetings or a few. We've even seen that just this evening as a perfect example. And, but this is a topic, I mean, the, the, the most unfortunate thing about this whole topic is the fact that we know what's not going away. Like we wish we could find interventions or responses or address the topic and then frankly move on, because we'd like just for our schools to be safe and our communities to be safe, not just here but everywhere. But we also know that's, that's not possible to determine. And so one of the questions that I have for you, Dr. Morris, just to think about, is, is there some broader community conversation that the, that the district and the committee should have with the public at some point? I mean, it could be, it could be this fall or even sometime next, I mean, I'm not to be funny about this, but it could be even next fall or even next winter, because the point would be to plan it appropriately, to define with, you know, staff and the community and others, students, the different elements to be included and, and the full dimensionality of it, which I think we're trying to address somewhat in this topic, but also was being addressed certainly in Ms. Zeranis's comments. You know, just, just to try to frame out some way to engage in a way that's responsive to all those messages you got and all the concerns we know people have heard. And I'm not asking for your response right now, I'm really just saying, it's, it's something bigger, I think, than just saying, hey, let's put it on an agenda in May and we'll talk about it for a couple of hours. It's really figuring out what's the right, what's the right conversation to have that takes these things into account. And it's even, it's even responding to Mr. Demling's comment earlier, that at least my sort of armchair, you know, sitting back and looking at the bulletin sort of citizenry would say that the concept of having a police officer in our schools is in fact explosively controversial when it was being discussed. And so, but I'm not, I'm not, what I'm saying is, I'm saying, there are lots of things we could talk about. I know that you've told me that you've gotten folks writing you advocating for metal detectors at the doors. And so my, my point is, there's lots of things people are thinking about in the community around this. There's lots of things people are thinking about how to parse, as Ms. Zeranis suggested, what's the profile of a potential perpetrator in this case? And then how do you think and respond to these things? I know it's a really rich topic. And so just throw that out for you, you can respond to briefly now or just some months later, months from now.
Yeah, no, I have a brief response, which is, I've talked to, you know, one of my close partners in lots of things is North Hampton Superintendent Provost, just because we have, you know, similar sized communities, similar demographics, politically, I think there's a lot of similarities. They're not the same place, but as districts go, we're more similar than most other districts, even across the state. And our conversation on this precise topic, we've both been wondering whether we can bring in someone externally who can engage the communities in some dialogue in a way that I think, you know, we wonder about our capacity to do locally with our own staff. And so we've actively been talking about that and what would that look like and how we'd share that between the communities, how do you get people to drive over a bridge one way or the other, right? Or do we involve Hadley because it's halfway? And just some logistical things like that, but also who's the right person to lead that conversation? And what we've found is there's a lot of, there's a lot of energy around that and there's a lot of runs on people who could actively facilitate that dialogue with the community. So it's something that we are aware of, I agree with your comments, and we're trying to figure out, because there's someone who even could, you know, do one in Amherst, one in North Hampton, make a cost share, but, but just really trying to think about someone who could reframe the conversation for us, decontextualize it so that it's not just about our communities, and then go deeper and back into our community so we could have that kind of like, here's the landscape, here's the, you know, how to talk about these things, here's what's happening in, in school safety, and then dig back into the community. Because I think that's, one of the hard things about all of these conversations is, you know, if you're there, just, it's a, it's a strange story to tell, but I think it's worth telling. So over February break, I spent three days, four days in Florida and missing it, right? Snow, no snow and all that kind of stuff. But huge convention center, the city I was in, the gun show, right? And it was the, like, you know, whatever it was, a week and a half after Parkland. And so it was striking. And then I realized that the context really matters, right? So, you know, if it was in Amherst and there was going to be a gun show at the Mullins Center, I could imagine a different response than the city I happened to be located in. And that's not a judgment, it's not saying it's a good, bad thing, it's just the reality. So who can cut across some of those things? Because our community is not, I've heard a diversity of opinions on gun control from members of our community, right? I, I think there's, I wouldn't say it's 50/50, but it's not 100/0 at all. And so that's, I think, how do we engage people who feel really passionately and differently on issues and how do we come to some consensus and work as a community? So I think, I agree and we'll work on how that might work out. Sorry, I was not short-winded like I promised, though.
Short-winded.
Yeah, I made it up. It's late, right?
I don't think it's anything that was short-winded about this entire community, this evening, rather. We're, we're, we're moving on into our, into our, our third hour, including our third hour. But the thing is, we do have a couple more topics to talk about that are really important. So I'm going to move on to the March 14th tomorrow.
Yeah.
No, front Wednesday.
Tomorrow in a school day.
The next.
Yes, thank you very much.
Because Mr. Sullivan has assured me that the roads will be clear Wednesday morning. So we're deeply appreciative. So I'm going to do some high points. I shared my letter, the letter from Mr. Jackson, the letter from Principal, Mr. Principal Jackson, Principal Bodie, with you all. So I think one of the things, and there are students here who are involved in it, that students have been involved in the planning process. And I can say on behalf of all of us, we're deeply appreciative that we have students who maturely want to engage, you know, the administrators. I know over the February break, both principals, middle school and high school got emails and had communication of students about, about March 14th. And there's been active meetings and planning that have been with staff as well as students and administration. And I really want to appreciate our administrators, because the goal's been to respect all views in the school. As I mentioned two minutes ago, there's a wide diversity of opinions on these, these issues, both on gun control, on whether students should walk out and not walk out. And by diversity of opinion, I'm talking about primarily the students. And our goal is that no student should feel like the adults didn't support them on Wednesday, right? So for students who walk out, want them to feel like the adults communicated, everyone, there was clarity on approach, they felt supported both of being able to express their opinions and to stay safe. So, you know, work there, Police Department, Mr. Jackson, you know, all the principals and students on that. Similarly, we want to make sure students who stay in their class, in their math class, get to learn math. That's what they want to do. And there's no coercion, there's no pressure that if, if students stay in this class, it means anything other than that they wanted to stay in class. And so we've tried to balance those two viewpoints with an approach that has been transparent. Both, both principals and middle school and high school went over their PA systems this morning and shared with their students what the announcement was, that what was shared was also shared with all faculty, so there was a common language to it. We were, our goal is to play, to promote inquiry and not to advocate. We're public school employees, however strongly I feel on this issue, is not something that we play out with students and the same with our faculty. And I was really impressed, I was only the high school faculty, Mr. Jackson, on Friday when this topic came up and I was eminently impressed with their capacity to just express their own viewpoints, only faculty members present, and their own feelings in that context, and to recognize that when they're with students, the rules are different, right? And our goal is promoting that inquiry approach. We tried to ensure that all students and families had full information about Wednesday. And there's letters from me, letters from the principals which you have, right, the announcements I mentioned. What we didn't want to have is confusion, right? So if people disagreed with our approach, certainly fine, but we didn't want to say, what is, what's going to happen again? What, what note do I have to bring, to bring in on Wednesday morning if I'm going to, right? We wanted to cut that, both in writing and orally, with all the, all the students, the faculty and the parents. We wanted to include that student safety is a major consideration. When students leave the campus, which I know many students are planning to do at the high school level, we wanted to make sure there was a police presence that, and to be really clear, I'm not worried about our students' actions themselves, just a lot of media attention around this. And when they leave our campus, they leave our walls, we want to make sure as best we can that they're supported. And the best way we know when they leave our property is to rely on the Amherst Police Department. And so they've worked with us on a plan to support the students and I know the staff, some staff will accompany them, not in a, a get up and make a speech role, but to make sure our students stay safe, they're able to express their opinions, feel confident about their, their safety. And that's been a major consideration, as well as at the middle school, where also students may leave the, not actually the grounds, but the building, and just making sure that, that all of our students and faculty stay safe. And I really want to compliment the community, right? So for all that you heard beginning tonight about disagreements, and we'll talk about it when we talk about budgets, all stakeholder groups, in my opinion, have been responsive, have been understanding of different points of view, and all have the same commitment that students should feel safe, both literally and figuratively, whatever their viewpoints are. And our job as an educational system is to promote that, not just to be passive, but to promote their stu, them having the experience they want to have. So that means if 80% of students leave a history class at 10 o'clock on Wednesday, that means there's four students who are there who want to stay in the class and want to learn history, they're going to learn history for that time. And they're going to feel comfortable learning history and they're going to not feel ostracized for making a choice they made. Similarly, for the 80 students, 80% of students who walk, and I'm making up these numbers, maybe it's 50/50 is a better one to use. And the students who leave, that they feel equally supported by the administration, that their voice matters, that we're actively working with them, and, and we take that responsibly seriously, and both from a faculty perspective as well as larger community's perspective. The feedback I received is just thank you for the clarity that your principals and you've been able to offer, because in these situations, the lack of clarity can lead to students feeling hurt and being hurt. And I think that's been our approach. Again, longer winded than.
Is there anything, I don't know if the principals want to add or not, if not, fine, but if they do?
I haven't answered questions.
That's okay. Just wanted to make sure I knew.
I'm happy to answer any questions or by.
Okay. So anything from the committee? How, has, have you gotten a response in terms of getting the business, the, you wrote that if a student is planning on leaving campus effectively, school grounds to march anyplace, they have to bring in a note? Have you gotten, has that gotten out to folks? So they, I mean, I know you said people, but have you got any feedback on that or knowledge on it? Sort of the question is, how's that working out in terms of messages?
Well, it went out, you know, our letters went out Friday.
Oh, okay.
And frankly, I'm a little nervous about Wednesday morning because we're not going to be here tomorrow. So there's going to be this big crush at 8 o'clock for a bunch of people walking in with notes. So it's going to look a little uneven. We'll, we'll manage. Everybody's been bringing over.
I'm serious.
Mr. Demling.
Yeah, I, I'm a little interested, in case any of the students, either, either our student rep or any students in the audience would, would want to share their perspective on it. Because like, I understand that staff and administration are politically neutral by policy, little different story at the school committee, you know? And I, you know, my whole thought, wearing my school committee hat this entire time has been, I want to be as supportive, you know, with all the same values that Dr. Morris talked about in terms of school safety and, and all that, and honoring every person who wants to do what they want to do at that time. You know, I want to be as supportive as possible to students in this kind of hour. I mean, this is, I never went through anything like this as, as a student. And when there's such a generational divide, where I can't even say, oh, I know where you're coming, I have no idea where you're coming from, you know? As, as, and so I just, I just feel so much for, for students who, you know, who see their, their peers under such threat. And, you know, so anything that we can do as a school committee to make them feel more empowered, that the school committee supports them in whatever small way we can, you know, is, is, you know, is my only thought on that.
I think members of the, I was going to obviously invite comment a second, but I think members of the committee are free to express their, their views around the student action. And I think their comments should be welcome. Not offering mine right at the second because I'm facilitating the conversation, so.
I'm more than happy to say, on the record, and I've been saying it all over social media and to anyone who'll listen, I think it's awesome what you guys are doing. I honestly just applaud you for your work. And I also think that the principal and superintendent, both principals actually, the entire community has rallied around this. And I think in particular because it is a pure expression of wanting to take this moment to make a difference. And it is something that, you know, quite frankly, I think our generation hasn't, you know, our generations, it's probably represented here at this table, haven't necessarily faced the same sort of thing that you have faced, this monster that you're facing at this point in time. But this generation now has this moment in history where you have captured people's hearts and imaginations. And I'm so hopeful that you can actually do something so incredible with this. So I think it's incredible. I fully support it. I was planning on, on being there, just in the background. And I have to say also to Superintendent's comments earlier about having adults there, I was actually at one of the walkouts that occurred last year, I think it was, from the high school, and was down on the commons and was incredibly impressed because there was an individual who had come at the group of students in a very aggressive manner. And for any of you who were there, you, you know what I'm talking about. And what I saw was, you know, the students, of course, were standing and doing what they were supposed to be doing. The adults came around and formed a barricade around this individual. In a protective, but not in-your-face sort of way, they allowed the students to continue moving around. And it was, to me, an incredible show of both faith in the students and protection and just community solidarity. And so I really appreciated seeing that and experiencing that, and that's what I'm hoping for again on Wednesday.
I agree with her. No, I, I think I absolutely completely agree with that. I actually, I have to say though, this, and I agree completely with Mr. Demling, said that there's, it is, it is almost, it is unimaginable to, to imagine what you're facing, you know? If living in our society today, knowing that these things happen, that's what I said earlier, it's just, it's impossible to conceive of. I also appreciate, as someone who grew up in this town and was actually like super massively progressive and activist and lefty back when I was a kid, and I was in, in high school, I remember occasionally some like Reaganite Republicans and really right-wing people would come around and whisper to me and say, you know, I feel okay being here too sometimes or whatever, you know? So, and that, and that sound funny because I know not everyone's like that, but I'm just saying, I, I really appreciate the fact, I appreciate both, the fact that you're trying to ensure that students of all backgrounds and all opinions on this subject, or even no opinion at all, continue to feel comfortable and welcoming in the school. I also really appreciate the fact that you're enabling these students to organize and get out there. And not really, I don't think particularly here in the state, but nationally, there's just no question that the people who have, you're leading this country have completely and utterly failed to keep you safe, I mean unquestionably. And so if you're going to stand up and you're going to say enough is enough and you've got to face this, that's an extraordinarily welcome, but it's urgent because it's not, there's nothing partisan about it. People want to stop being shot and killed and to be at risk and being endangered. And it's something, it's pure human decency to step up and organize around that. So I think that's terrific. That's all I have to say about that. But I guess at this point, what I'd do is probably because we're on March 14th, I'm going to open this up now, because also we had this general discussion thing, I'm going to open up now to public comment and also just offer the idea that if anyone has an opinion about, what was the issue around supporting companies that work with the NRA?
So the member who raised the topic with me is not present, so I wonder if we can hold the conversation until she is to introduce it.
Okay. Well, okay, I know what it is.
Yeah.
I mean, we're going to hold the topic, but the topic was basically, there are companies that have active sponsorship relationships with NRA members, and there was a question as to whether or not our school district should actively use vendors that as to whether or not our school district should actively use vendors that have that relief, that supportive relationship to NRA members. But we can table that issue, but otherwise, if anyone has any public comments or comments, they can come forward and make them, and you identify yourself, and you have three minutes to speak. And if you don't, then you don't have to, then we will close that. And then, we're going to take with the, unless there's anything, anyone wants to say about the third item, on supporting companies that work with the NRA, we can table that item. I see no disagreement to tabling that item. Hey, look, an almost complete agenda, still packed with wonderful, action-packed items for us to discuss as a committee. Sean Mangano? You're hovering that microphone. Our next item of business is budget vote.
Which we just made more difficult.
So, yeah, I mean, I think Mr. Mangano has done some quick work to show us what is different in the budget proposal than, in terms of the assessment totals than what was shared.
Can you pull this up?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I got it.
Every item tonight is important.
See, there's some things about the school.
This is one of the funny things, right? Like, this isn't one of those situations where you'd say, oh, I really wish we weren't dealing with this tonight. It's like, everything is like something we have to deal with, that's really important. I say that with the indulgence of patience of, we're all committed, right? We're here, we're committed, we're doing it.
We're here.
I think we just get.
So, do you want me to take this one?
Yes, you do.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
He does.
Do you have a microphone?
The cameras are not working, what was shared with me, so we'll pick up there, but it's not projecting here. It's not Amherst Media's issue, it's our issue.
So, if you're in the back row, and you want to hear better, move up.
So, I'm going to do my best to talk both ways while reading what we just created. So, there's a few votes for the committee tonight. So, the first one is...
Is it possible, should that be a merge?
Yep, I think so.
And you can roll for me?
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Marks.
Well, except the numbers will change, probably. Well, not yet, soon.
So, the first vote is the assessment method, and that can stay regardless of what budget you vote, based on previous conversation. That has been vetted by D E S I. I know there's conversations about different methods that haven't been vetted by D E S I, this one has been reviewed, and that's the language they suggested. The next vote is the actual budget and the assessments. So, the first two, where it says within guidance, that's what we were planning to have voted tonight, so that was what was sort of on here and in your packets. If you go down a little bit more, Mike, where it says over guidance, so that's what I just tried to calculate for you. So, the voted piece at the top is a higher budget, that's $25,000 higher than what we originally looked at, and the assessments now have all gone up by $25,000, distributed proportionally among the four towns. So, for Amherst, it's an increase of $19,773. For Pelham, it's an increase of $1,00175. For Leverett, it's an increase of $1,0790, and for Shootsbury, it's an increase of $2,0262. So, I just wanted to give you both those options before we discuss. The other two votes tonight is, the first one is Special Education Stabilization Fund, so we created a stabilization fund a couple, last year, actually. Our plan this year was, we normally budget a placeholder for special education, and we wanted to, if that doesn't get used this year, to go into that stabilization fund, to start to build up a placeholder in that stabilization fund. That was really what we had in mind when we first created that, was to try to build that reserve, so eventually, we don't have to have that reserve in the operating budget. And then, the last vote is, actually, two more votes, sorry. Debt assessment, so this is a new vote that you'll be asked to do, that our new auditors have asked, even though we give the debt schedule to the towns, and it's sort of predetermined that the school committee just vote the debt assessment. And then, the last one is the capital plan for next year. So, these are the projects that we've looked at before, the building new study, Summit Academy renovation work, bringing it to the high school, roof repairs at the middle school, and a boiler replacement. So, those are the votes.
Okay, are there any questions?
I do have a question. So, the amendment for the assessment method, is there a reason that we cannot amend it to include the all five years of the phase-in plan, and say for 2019, for 2020, for 2021?
I don't think we possibly could consider that, but I don't think that would bind future school committees to do, to do anything, because each year, you're going to have to vote on the assessment method until we're actually on the statutory method. So, it'd be a much longer vote, we wouldn't really, I mean, you're right, we could put that wording in, but I think because of some of the reluctance, especially at the four-town meeting that we heard, that some towns have only committed to that for one year, that we didn't want to sort of put all five years in, because that would be sort of counter to what the feedback was.
Mr. Demley.
So, are you interested in detailed questions on any of these items? The reason I ask is...
Can I see a question? Are you going to ask a detailed question about debt assessment or capital plan bond authorization?
Yes.
You will? Okay, rock on. I think the answer's going to be no.
We know at the elementary level, we've had some issues with the weather recently with the Fort River roof. I don't know if the middle school roof has experienced.
Yeah.
Some sort of update that may or may not impact our previous plans?
I mean, the middle school roof, to my understanding, has been actually the one that's been most impacted, so I think the roof repairs are more pertinent than ever right now.
Are you trying to say that there are more tarps on the ceiling with hoses going into buckets?
Under the ceiling, yeah. Into some sort of container.
That's a point of clarification. Are you asking because you think the number needs to be higher than it is, or are you just asking to ask?
I was asking because this was planned prior to those weather incidents, so I was wondering, from whatever direction of the compass.
We knew the middle school roof was in rough shape, which is why we added this in. I think there still has to be a larger conversation around when we replace the full roof, which we know the cost is large, but the hope is, what we've heard from architects is that that money will make a big impact on limiting those leaks in the roof.
Yeah, just to put a finer point on it, is that we know that the cost, we had that study done that was funded last year, we know the cost of replacing the middle school roof is $2.4 billion. And so, what the folks who did that estimate told us, that this will buy a couple of years, it will not resolve the long-term issues of the middle school roof, but the hope is that it gives us a little time to look at different use of buildings at the regional level, before we ask the towns to put that money, but the roof of the middle school will need to be replaced in the next few years to be, you know, this will eliminate the problems we had, like on the day that you mentioned, this was two weeks ago, I think, where we had that weird rain event, and, but it won't replace the foundational issues relevant to the middle school roof.
Since we're talking about leaky roofs, I've got some young women that would like everyone to know that the girls locker room in the high school leak is leaking now, too.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
We're counting the buildings that didn't have a leak that day, I think Wildwood and Pelham.
Okay, so, unless there are other general questions, we have four votes in front of us, including possible modifications to some of those votes. I want to break it down into separate items then, because I think it's, and actually, it's probably even reasonable to do it the way you have it. Assessment method, majority vote. The item as written says to amend, move, it would be a motion, I'm not moving it at the moment, I'm just saying it, is we be moved to amend Section 6 of the Amherst-Pelham Regional School District Agreement by adding subsection I as follows. For fiscal year 2019 only, the alternative operating budget assessment shall be calculated as twenty percent of the minimum contribution, with the remainder of the assessment allocated to the member towns in accordance with the per pupil method found in Section 6E of the Amherst-Pelham Regional School District Agreement. So, is there a motion to that effect?
Still moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions or discussion on that item?
Just for the public, can we clarify which nonsensical methodology, number, numeral, code language we had that this corresponds to, that we've been talking about earlier?
Wow, that's a rather judgmental question.
I don't know if I want to answer that. So, this actually wasn't any of them? I mean, this is going to, this is going to our current statutory method, and what we heard after, all the feedback we got from the four towns is to try to transition into that. So, I mean, it'd be S4, it'd be a transition to S4, if that's what you're looking for.
Perfect, thank you.
And actually, to add to that, just because I think we, I think all the communication was shared with the committee, but if it wasn't, that's unfortunate. We have expressed, our committee has gotten pretty vocal comments, organized by votes, by votes of the Select Board and Finance Committee of the town of Leverett, by votes of the Select Board and Finance Committees of the town of Shootsbury, and the town, I'm being also transparent to the public, because the public probably is wondering if they're following the gobbledygook of this stuff, of what on earth are you guys talking about? So, we had something called the S10 method. The S10 method was a new composite methodology for assessing costs amongst the towns that was created after a multi-month process of working with consultants and a working group of members of our different towns, leaders of our different towns, and without going into what's in it, because it really doesn't matter anymore, there was disagreement as to whether to adopt it. Some towns wanted to do it, another town didn't want to do it. The town of Shootsbury had asked the school committee to approve and forward the so-called S10 method to all four towns' town meetings, and essentially force a vote on the question of whether, call the question, as a lot of the towns would approve that methodology. We had heard from one of the towns, in particular the town of Leverett, that they would never agree to that, and in fact, they would block the improvement of the regional assessment, any regional assessment compromise if we forwarded that, which would then default as to an immediate adoption of the statutory method, without any phase-in whatsoever, which would cause much greater budget cuts to our budgets. The town of Leverett voted alternately and forwarded to the committee its request that we approve a language that would include an agreement for a five-year phase-in of the statutory method, which would explicitly denote in the text that this is the first year of a five-year phase-in of the statutory method, and they argued strongly that this is what they had told us they wanted to do, and this is what they want to agree to do. So, the pickle that the school committee, oh, I'm sorry, I should, I, do you remember what Pelham's position was? Have they, what's Pelham's position on this? Before I get to Amherst.
I can guess.
I can share what the finance committee shared with me, is that they're, I think they would have went along and supported method S10. That being said, they were all for having consistency between whatever method was chosen or was agreed to, that the dollar amounts be consistent, you know, even though theoretically they would have paid more, the town of Pelham would have paid more under different methodologies, that if they choose a methodology, it should be fairly executed for each town, because it was a little bit of like, well, you said you would pay X, and now you're paying Y, because S10 was, they would have paid more, and S4, they would have paid less. Given that we're going to S4, they feel like the fairest thing is that we actually do the five-year roll and phase into S4. Sorry, there's a little more context to Pelham that I guess I'm not explaining. There was some concern, because they were supportive of something that had a higher cost to the town, but they wanted to be fair and equitable for doing a formula, we stick to the formula, so they're supportive of us, of our current model.
Okay. And the town of Amherst had, and correct me, other Amherst people, if I'm wrong, had agreed in principle to do the first year of a five-year phase-in of the statutory method, but had also said that they were not in fact agreeing to executing further years of the five-year phase-in, because they do not feel that this is a settled question, that the formula is not a settled question that the towns in fact agree upon, and because of potential future risk to Amherst budgets, they were not agreeing to a full five-year phase-in. Did I get that right?
The only thing I would add is that I think Amherst also agreed to a one-year increase, right, to 3.5%, and that's still on books, and so, that'll help provide some relief for this year, but the following year, they're eager to come up with a long-term solution, and they don't feel that this is it, so.
Right, exactly. So, the challenge, I'm just, the reason I'm taking the time to do this is one, by the way, anyone bothering to follow this is kind of discussion, I think as you were suggesting, would rapidly get lost in all the gobbledygook of the language, and also, what it does is it tends to mask the fact that there are actually very significant substantive disagreements between the towns about how we pay for our school district budget, that are really real. And without getting into that, that's one reason why the method that's before you is essentially a compromise. It matches a first year of a five-year phase-in to the statutory method. It's not written in such a way that it's absolutely trying to bind the towns to it for subsequent years, but at least I'm speaking for myself in terms of my awareness of this item anyways, to extend it is, in my mind, that's not actually because, I don't think, and you can just correct me, Mr. Mangano, it wasn't actually because the district leadership was endorsing Amherst's position over anyone else's, it was actually because at the point you get written emails of formal votes from Leverett saying, you got to do A, and don't do B, whatever you do, and you get written instruction from a formal vote from Shootsbury saying, you better do B, and whatever you do, don't do A, you in fact already, and then, you have, you do have another town, the town of Amherst in this case, we'll say, saying, hey, don't do A or B, you've got to do some sort of new C that we believe in. Alls that really proves to us as a committee is, my goodness, there really isn't agreement amongst these towns of what to do, and there certainly is an agreement amongst these towns of what to do, like for the next five years. And so, the question is, how do we bridge this conversation in a way that has integrity to the four-town meeting, where there was at that meeting initially, agreement to do this year, the first year of a five-year phase-in, and that's kind of what we're doing, if we approve this item? Mr.?
Yes, and just, and not to belabor point, but I think it's good to be clear with the public, if folks are watching, that the, if there was an agreement, we end up in a statutory method that is, would have been, would be, much, much worse in terms of the impact on the district. So, I think that's the other thing that I think is worth sharing, if people haven't been paying attention to this, is that our default setting, so if we get to no place of agreement, and we go straight to the statutory method full bore this year, that involves a much more significant budget reduction than we're already making, so I think that's the delicate balance that the committee and myself and Mr. Mangano have had to try to play, is how do we get through this year, continue dialogue about the future, knowing that there's not agreement, and avoid the worst-case scenario, which this assessment methodology has the potential to do.
Ms. Mary?
So, this might not be necessary, but since we're doing this kind of discussion of the process, I think it's worth, at least for me, coming from a place, we talked about, you know, defaulting to the statutory, and, you know, the towns agree to this or agree to that, I want to, I think it'd be helpful just to, it was agreed to yet, right? We still have to, it's still voted at town meeting.
Right.
And so, I mean, I have a couple of questions as far as, and maybe we don't know until we get there, the likelihood that this will pass, given the dialogue that's gone on between the different towns at this point, but also acknowledge that it's the town citizens in the end that will make the decision, not the boards or committees of any one town, right?
All those people that showed up.
So, I think, just to make sure that, right, that the public knows what their role in, their role is in this process.
I think Ms. Mary's absolutely right. I mean, first off, nothing, I thought I was saying the opposite of there's agreement amongst the towns. I mean, I was saying there's...
No, you weren't, but I'm just saying that, even just, oh, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to criticize, I'm just saying, my point was that there is absolutely not agreement amongst the towns, but that when we met early in January, sometime in January, third week in January, something like that, we were very close to agreeing on something that could at least move us forward for this year, and that's essentially what we've rested on. You're absolutely correct that the town meetings are in the end going to have both this assessment method and also a budget presented to them for approval by their assessment method, and also a budget presented to them for approval by their towns, as well as actually a, an actual assessment they've got to approve. And so, it's up to the towns, the townspeople, you know, to approve these things. I don't know if you have anything else to add as context, or you had another point you wanted to make on that?
Well, I was only, my only point was that, when we say the town says this, it's really different forms of town government, but the final yes or no on any of this is the citizenry, the town meeting.
You know, that actually inspires me to make one other comment, that's building off what you're saying. You know, this is not a comfortable thing, because the reality is, the level of disagreement we're seeing from the towns means, we're not, unlike last year, for example, we're actually not going into this recommendation process, knowing with any certainty that the elected leaders of the towns are going to fully endorse what the committee's doing. The reason I laid out and took the time to lay out the instructions we received, instructions is the wrong term. There are the opinion and requests, but formally voted, which is the key point I'm making, from Leverett and from Schutzbury, the guidance we've explicitly received from Amherst, and then that you've heard from Pelham, is that because there's not in fact complete commonality between what these different boards have said, there's actually literally no decision we can make today, that we can feel confident that we know for a fact, the elected leaders of each town are gonna say, ah, you've hit on the one thing we all agree on, that in fact, we've received explicit communications telling us, in clear enough language, that that does not exist. And so, what we're forced to do is, we're forced to make a decision of the most prudential decision we think we can make on behalf of the schools, provide that guidance back to, in this vote, back to the towns, and then communicate the rationale behind that decision, and why we think that's, has wisdom behind it, even if there are very strong and well-reasoned arguments on the behalf of the towns, for why they have advised us to move in a different direction. And that's where we're at. You pride it out of me, Emily. Mr. Emily?
I think my five-second summary of that would be, these are the values that we all tentatively agree to, all four towns, the last four towns meeting, and they avoid the most drastic cuts, which would be six, seven hundred thousand dollars more, if we had to immediately default.
That is accurate. So, is there any further, we've moved in second to the item, is there any further discussion or debate on it before we move to approval or rejection of this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the assessment method, as previously read, moved in second, signify by raising your hand. Carrie's unanimously. On to the budget. Is there any further?
So, I mean, it's your decision whether to do the guidance or over-guidance. I think there's pros and cons of both, and some of them have already been talked about.
Probably welcome your opinion, though.
Yeah, I mean, so, I'm sort of torn. I mean, since I've been here, I take the guidance we receive from the towns very seriously, because I, you know, we all read articles about towns, and especially regional school districts, where there's constant fighting between school committees and finance committees, and we've worked really hard and tried to avoid that, and I think one way we've tried to avoid that is by really sticking with their guidance, at least their financial guidance in terms of what the assessment they're telling us they can afford. So, I put a lot of importance on that, but there's also the educational piece of, if we have to come back to you and cut $25,000 more, what does that look like? So, those are a couple perspectives to consider, but I do think it's very important to, when a town says this is our guidance, especially when Amherst comes up another full percentage point, to then come in over that, without sort of communicating with them, that sends a message, so.
Dr. Morris, do you have anything to add?
So, I don't think how to say this effectively and sensitively. I am more concerned about the next two years' budgets than I am about this year's budget. And so, I think that's my conflict. To Mr. Mangano's point, my concern, and it's not to disagree with what I heard and what the committee voted tonight, that's not where I'm coming from, on the particular issue that was voted. Sometimes people have long memories for details like $25,000, and I think things are so tenuous right now between the towns, I don't think there's, I don't think that's a judgment. I think that's, my sense is everyone who was at the last four-town meeting, or the last couple of four-town meetings, would agree with that statement. It's not about blame, it's not about this town or that town, it's that things are tenuous. And they've been tenuous for a while. And so, I guess my concern about the vote, and in the increase, without getting, gathering feedback from committees, whether we disagree with it or not, right, that's, that's what is causing me pause. Because it's not actually about the money, I mean, we could talk, and we could have more conversations, and I'll have a quick solution for $25,000, but I guess my concern, and maybe I'm being more concerned than I need to be, is, is this gonna be a variable that hits elected officials awkwardly, between school committee and towns, and towns between towns? I mean, I can imagine, this was raised in the earlier conversation, this issue mostly we had heard from certain towns, and Amherst is already going up, like, I think there's legitimate opinions multiple ways, and to make a decision without having heard from finance committees and select boards, again, I'm not saying that they would say yes or no, or that this board would have to agree with what they said, but that's the part that makes me feel uncomfortable. So, that's not telling the board, the committee what to do, but I think the risk isn't so much the $1,790 from Leverett, or the $1,175 from Pelham. I think it's actually more a process concern than it is a dollars and cents concern, and just how quickly things happen, and that's our reality, we, a lot of people come tonight, they didn't come to the budget hearing, right? But I guess that's my caution.
I guess I'm looking to acknowledge myself. Teacher, I have, am I right that if, and I could be wrong, but am I right that if, based on past practice in town meetings, if we voted the budget guidance, but then engaged with a conversation with the four towns around increasing it, that whoever introduces this item to town meeting could actually move to increase the amount themselves as a recommended item to the town meeting?
Yes. That, that's, I've seen, we have examples...
I'm unsure.
No, I'm asking a procedural question, so if I'm wrong, I just want to know.
Just my concern, can I talk to Dr. Morris?
Sure, of course.
Is that that would be outside the scope of the article? But I might be totally wrong, just having dealt with this before, because if you're increasing, then you're...
So, I think when the budget would come up to vote, someone would make a motion to increase the budget by $25,000, if that's the way you wanted to sort of pass that through it. And then that would have a ripple effect for the assessments, but I know we've been in Amherst town meeting where they've increased the assessment, or increased the budget on the floor of town meeting, after this will be a lower number. So, it's a little funkier, because it'd have to be done at all four-town meetings, and approved at least, I think, three of them? Again, it's a little funky process. So, you'd have to really kind of coordinate that, because if just Amherst did it, then it doesn't matter, because that wouldn't go through, because of the regional budget.
Right. And I think, I mean, unfortunately, I'm becoming familiar with the rules. I also got some advice that it is, you can request to lower an amount, but not increase an amount, if it goes above what the select board agreed to levy. So, I don't, I am certainly not the expert.
Yeah, I've just, I know from our experience, we've seen many examples of the counter, and maybe sort of like the select board's position, that that's, and that makes sense, why they would want that practice.
The reason I asked the question was just simply, if the, sort of like we have a series of like, different interesting conversations and difficult challenges tonight, if the next one is the question of, so we need to get the assessment methodology approved, and we already know the towns are disagreeing with each other potentially about that, hopefully won't, hopefully that'll fall to saying it's okay. And then the next question is, we don't really want to cut our budget more, but we made a policy decision essentially, that we also didn't want to do what we were doing earlier. We'd like to increase the budget by 25,000. The reality is, that's gonna require the agreement of all four towns to do, and there's sort of two different ways to approach that conversation, but pending the parliamentary question of, can you in fact increase the budget on the floor? Which is, you either, either you change it now, and then you hope that you don't create such ill will by doing that procedurally, that almost as a matter of principle, people tell you, there's no way I'm gonna agree with you, because you went about this the wrong way, and I'm angry at you, even though frankly, the amount of money is relatively trivial. I'm just, forgive me for saying that, but in the grand scheme of the size of our budgets as towns, it's not, it's not a huge amount of money, in terms of the towns being able to dish out money. Then the other way of doing it, and I'm not trying to put the thumb in the scope one with the other, I'm just saying, the other way of looking at it is, if you do the guidance, then what you have to work to do is, between now and town meeting, collectively try to get the towns to agree that it's still reasonable to put the money in, which they may not agree to do. I recognize it's a problem. Ms. Emily?
So, I don't know if this is more of a practical point, but, so if we know for certain that you can, on the floor of Amherst town meeting, you can vote to increase the budget, that's 19.7 of the 25K we're talking about. So, even if one of the towns fails to cony up its paltry sum, that we've pretty much covered the budget item. So...
Again, but in order for the budget to vote, you need three out of four to approve the budget.
Right.
So, you're right, one could vote no, as long as all four vote the assessment method. One could vote no, if the other three vote the budget. But one town can't vote a higher amount, and then that's the new budget.
They'd all have to vote the new number.
Not for, not for the region.
So, probably unrealistic, but just trying to add options to the table. So, I just wonder if, I'm wondering about Leverett's timeline in particular, about warrant articles, and whether, even if not a formal meeting, a communication go to all member towns, just say, this is under consideration, gather feedback, in a way, in a couple days, and this body can get back together before week's end to make a final decision. And again, not that we would necessarily get agreement, but just what feels, and I don't want to belabor the point, and I'm not saying I'm right, but just, what I don't know is, how the response will be to having no communication and a vote that's different than what people are expecting. That's the piece that I can't work my head around. And I think, to be fair, I can identify with that, you know, that concern, however compelling the rationale is to increase the budget, that it just seems out of turn, process-wise, even if we don't have time to have the great, the best process, just, you know, I think it was, it'd be a surprise to all member towns that the budget's a little bit higher. So, I guess that's the part around communication that concerns me, because I think we're working with tenuous lines of communication to begin with, and I'm just concerned about exacerbating those, because as much as $25,000 has a big impact, we heard about that tonight, I'm worried about FY '20, and FY '21, and FY '22, and just balancing those, that's where I'm struggling.
Ms. Zansky?
I echo Dr. Morris's feedback there. I think, especially in Leverett, it will be very challenging to go back and say, we had this agreement and we're changing it, even for a small amount of money. I sat through the finance committee meeting where they went through their, you know, what they were gonna do with the $36,000 and some other money that is over what they had last year, and education was the very last priority that that town had to spend that money. And I mean, the last. Only one person recommended that they put any extra money towards education. So, given that, I think we have a significant challenge if we come back with a number that still might be below the, what they had given us for guidance, but they have now developed the rest of their budget around that number. And I think you might get a little bit of angst from that. The second question I had was, $25,000 on our school budget, doesn't seem like a lot. I know we've talked about a lot of difficult cuts, and I know we've also talked a lot about unknowns, right? We don't know how many kids will go to Voke, we don't know how many kids will be school choice, we don't know if somebody will go to a charter school. So, how does the $25,000 relate to some of those sort of contingencies that we are planned for and don't know already?
So, you know, we've cut two-thirds of our contingency. So, that was what, one of the budget cuts, the first one was that. So, I guess that's what makes me a little anxious about it. I think we'll have more to share in health insurance later this month, probably not in time for the 20th, but like, there are next meeting following that. But we're not at a resolution place on that matter either. And, you know, I mean, the $25,000 could take up, I'm trying to think what we had left in contingency, it would pretty much...
Yeah, you might have a little bit left over.
Right, it would basically take the whole contingency. And that's something that we could do, right? Is it advisable, might we have to freeze the budget again, right? All those things might happen regardless of the $25,000, it's just gonna make it $25,000 tighter. But that's sort of where we're, we're sitting with, because I was thinking the same thing, you know?
I mean, we talked about money that we have earmarked, that we hope we don't spend for special education, that can go into our long-term fund. I mean, again, those are not good, long-term financial decisions, you never want to pull from those for something that's not a one-time expense, but I'm...
So, is there any?
So, you know, I expressed previously my concern about moving too quickly on all this, and I still kind of feel the same way, especially in light of the way this conversation has gone. That said, I'm wondering if, you know, maybe one, this is a risk, of course, but it seems like, you know, I don't love the idea of going to the towns now and saying, we want more money at this point, right? Because I think that, that's a decision that town meeting can make, and that's different than us going now and saying, we're gonna add money to the guidance that you just gave us, after having gone through this entire wrong process. So, I think where I am right now is that we approve this budget, the guidance, you know, that we were given, and that we take the risk of going to town meeting afterwards and saying, you know, we want more money, and this is the reason why. Then at that point, I think it's basically up to the communities to decide, is this important to us, and if so, here's how we're gonna do it. And if not, then I think, you know, to Mr. Nakajima's point earlier, then that's, it's on the communities to explain the reasons why they're not gonna fund this, and why it's not important to them. But I don't think we are in a position right now, you know, given the conversations that we've had, the amount of work that has gone into these budgets, and quite frankly, the level of cuts that we've already introduced, because even though it's significantly reduced from the worst-case scenario, it's still pretty damn bad, right? And so, I don't think it's worth, at this point, reopening all of that and trying to, you know, have these conversations. I mean, as, you know, generous as some of these towns have been in getting us to this point, and as far as they're willing to go, I don't think it's fair to come to them now and ask for additional money when they haven't had the opportunity to go through all of this, and, you know, at least, for the sake of transparency, I don't think it's a, it's a right move for us.
Carrie?
I have a question. So, I agree that what seems most respectful is to vote the number that we have been discussing the whole time, and then pursue something after the fact through town meeting, coordinating with the boards if possible. But I don't, is there a way then, that, I mean, the way I'm thinking about it is, if we ask for the additional $25,000, it's not tied to any particular, it's not tied to keeping both Voke options open, it's just, I mean, that's why we're asking for more, but it's not like, if they don't approve it, we're gonna come back and close off the options? Or is that something we would entertain at that point, to fund?
We would have to fund the $25,000 somehow, so...
Yes, that's my understanding.
I think what we've heard is no on the agreement, so we'll be looking at other ways to close the $25,000 gap.
So, I guess, I'm only thinking about that, because then, when we, when we're talking about it with the towns, it's not like, by giving, you know, the budget, in addition to $25,000, you're funding this, because if you don't, then something else will be cut, not that.
You've already voted against it.
So, I think it just complicates the discussion a little bit, you know what I mean? It is not a direct trade-off. Although, I guess in general, I still think that that's probably the best method.
Ms. Zansky?
Just a follow-up, because I think Dr. Morris had raised the concern about waiting...
Just a follow-up, because I think Dr. Morris had raised the concern about waiting for town meeting, because given the lateness of the year, especially for Amherst. Do you still feel that way? Is it still a concern that if we were to wait for town meeting to make a decision on this, and potentially, the students are waiting to hear whether or not they can actually, you know?
Yeah, I think, my personal opinion is, if we're coming to a decision in May, I think next year should be off the table. You know, I don't, I just don't think it's fair for kids, for our students.
You mean in terms of revisiting an agreement?
Yeah, I mean, we revisited for the FY '20 budget, right? And that process could start differently and have more, different levels of engagement, but I don't think ethically I would support having kids waiting that late into the school year, because at that point, students are registering for classes, our students are registering for classes in ninth grade here, and the Voke schools have the same, same way, and it's just not something I could support.
Just a follow-up, sorry, just to clarify. So then, the $25,000 that we would go to town meeting for would be to restore other cuts, because initially, this agreement was supposed to save certain cuts, right? So would you be identifying those in advance of what those cuts would be, that the town union would be restoring?
I mean, at this point, I feel like we would live without a contingency. I don't, I mean, at this point, when I think of, like, we've done all the non-people cuts we could do, right? So the things that got restored were all people, right? It wasn't like, oh, well, sure, supplies. The supplies cuts are very real for the teachers, right? And so we heard that when we met with the faculty, is, you know, easy for me to say 10% supplies, we can live without it. Much harder when you're trying to organize courses and you're using those funds to buy materials that students benefit from and need. Some, it's hard for me to do this in a vacuum or to do it so quickly without more dialogue, but kind of, I don't think I'd be going back and making more personnel reductions. I think we'd be kind of crossing all of our fingers and toes, and then potentially back where we were this year, where we have to be really cautious with our budgets and spending and all that. I've received, I know there was a lot of feedback tonight, and it's not a critique, I've received, and we've received, as you have, a lot of feedback on some of the other things that got restored as well, right? So I can't prioritize one versus another, because one happened with X number of people at X hour versus another way, so I think that would be my recommendation, and, you know, I don't, I mean, I'm looking at Mr. Mangano as well.
Yeah, well, to your point about the people, it'd be hard, especially at that point, because there's deadlines around notifying staff of reduction of forces and things like that. So if that happened after, was it April 15th?
And sooner than that, our notification to the...
Right, April 15th, yeah. So I think that would take additional people cuts off the table, if we were waiting until town meeting to figure out that piece of it.
And I just think, you know, just to add to it just briefly, as we've had a robust engagement with faculty to come to this place and to go back on that, I'll be very frightened perhaps because it's late, I think would be a very difficult conversation. You know, we heard one demographic, you know, group, and not demographic, but one group of people tonight, I think staff consideration of, well, because of X, therefore, this position goes away, would engender a kind of dialogue that wouldn't be helpful or productive between staff and certain community members, and that's not something I'd like to do.
Let's see a question. I mean, is there, is it, is it conceptually possible, or based on your experiences, it makes no sense, to in fact, request additional funding above budget because we've cut into our contingencies enormously? And so to ask for additional money for a contingency, so that it wouldn't be used unless there was an actual need to do so, based on unforeseen budget impacts in the coming year? And, you know, if we, I mean, I guess you'd want to do that in a way that it didn't require going to each select board or something to get it approved during the year, unless there were a last resort or something like that. But I'm just wondering, since I think it's reasonable, A, it's reasonable to say, at this point of the year, that the best place to find the $25,000 is contingency, but that means we're flying close to the margin, then the most logical thing to ask for the towns is not to restore any particular operating line item, but rather instead to say, we need a better backstop in terms of contingency, that we'd hoped to never spend, but we need a little bit more to go on.
So a different approach, a little more cumbersome, but I'd feel more comfortable speaking at the town meetings about it, would be, because we're cutting $1.1 million, and we received feedback throughout the process, we've cut our contingency. That's how bad our budgets are, and we are being incredibly conservative with our spending, right, all the steps we're doing, and we may have to come back at fall town meeting if things go bad, because we don't have it. I think contingency is something, my experience is, and I get questions, and I know Mr. Mangano does, about, why do you have a contingency at all? Why can't you budget? Right? And that's a complicated conversation that doesn't yet, I've been unsuccessful at being able to share that, and in a way where people understand that education works functionally differently than other industries around. We don't exactly know who our kids are, who come in, right, the movement, all the variables that we have, and not that other industries don't, but that gets used, that statement gets stated a lot. So, I mean, I think that approach might, because by the time we get to fall town meeting in the four communities, we'll be pretty clear on, you know, things broke right and they're looking good, or things broke wrong, and when we're asked to cut $1.1 million and take our contingency, here's the downside, is that we actually need it. My sense in the towns is contingency hasn't been a convincing point of view.
Yeah, no, I think you're both right. I mean, I think the process that you framed is exactly what we need to do, and maybe we give them a heads up, can you, you may want to put aside a contingency, because we may need to come back to you in the fall, maybe within their free cash. I know we've done this with other towns for elementary districts, they sort of have a contingency for, if something bad happens, they can, we can request additional funds. We've had to do that in Pelham before. So I think, those are both sort of good strategies.
I hate to say it, but that's just sort of another way of going at the question of how do we engage the towns around the possibility, this might not be enough money, but we're also not trying to jam the towns into coming up with it right now, to use, it sounds like a stick-up metaphor, or something I don't mean, I don't really mean. Other, I mean, this isn't, by the way, also a meeting of attrition, we simply grind ourselves into dust as it approaches midnight. So if there's, if there are, if there are views people have on this, express them. Oh, Ms. Demble?
I mean, I won't repeat everything that you said. I agree with the tenuousness and the wanting to respect the process, and the fact that Amherst went from 2.5% to 3.5%. I mean, that to me, it's like they've already gone above and beyond the call of duty, and so, you know, to force the issue, rather than to just present the issue and let towns decide, would be not prudent.
Is there, I mean, I hate to put people on the spot, but that's kind of what we're doing. Is there any contrary position to that? Because if not, I mean, we could move, we could move the budget within guidance as presented, and then take under advisement and future planning all the conversation that went into this. Could I have a motion?
I'll move to approve, or to adopt a budget of $31,815,351 for fiscal year 2019 for the Amherst-Pelham Regional School District, and to assess member towns according to the method in the just-approved amendment as follows. Amherst, $16,45,304. Pelham, $947,186. Leverett, $1,455,928. Chutesbury, $1,775,964.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is any further debate on the item? Is there any?
Question, this language of further voted, and it's regarding the $98,000 to the Special Education Stabilization Fund. So the conversation that we just had, could that in any way change or affect this Special Education Stabilization Fund?
I wouldn't change the way of the vote now. I think you're right, based on our planning, we may, what actually can actually be transferred into the stabilization fund, maybe a different amount, which could happen anyway, if there's an anticipated outage replacement, so that could happen anyway. But I want to change the number at this point, because that's still sort of what's budgeted in the line item.
Thank you.
That's a good question.
That is a different motion, though, right?
It's new this year, so I did further voted, so you could add it to that motion if you wanted, since it's sort of within...
Shall we amend it to the motion?
It's within the operating budget, so I add it as part of the...
You can amend it if the seconder approves the second, the second I got it.
Was it seconded?
No, no, read it.
Further voted that included within this budget proposal is a contribution of $98,000 to the Special Education Stabilization Fund.
Who's the seconder? Can you accept that?
There you go.
Accept that, okay. So that's the item. Is there any further debate on this? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion as read, raise your hand signifying aye. The motion carries unanimously. Debt assessment.
So, this is a little less controversial. This is a debt schedule that has been presented to the towns, it's for projects already completed and for debt obligations. And so the only changes here is, it's sort of been folded into the budget in the past, and our new auditors want us to explicitly vote the amounts each year going forward, so this is our first go-around with that. But these are all the numbers that all four towns have seen, and I haven't heard any disapproval about any of the numbers.
Okay, could I get a motion?
I move to assess member towns for debt service on previously proved projects according to the debt schedule for FY '19 as follows. Amherst, $284,038. Pelham, $23,255. Leverett, $34,114. Chutesbury, $27,770.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Ms. Marriott. Any further debate on this item, discussion, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, signifying aye, raising your hand, motion carries unanimously. Who draws the long or shortest draw, depending on the quality of their lungs? Ms. Demble?
Careful, it's two pages.
I was going to say...
I move that the district hereby appropriates the sum of $322,000 for the purpose of paying costs of the following projects, including payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. One, building youth study in the amount of $90,000. Two, roof repairs for the middle school in the amount of $20,000. Three, replacement of the middle school boiler in the amount of $115,000. And four, Summit Academy relocation renovation costs in the amount of $97,000. Said sum to be expended at the direction of the Regional School District School Committee. To meet this appropriation, the district treasurer is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 71, Section 16D of the General Laws and the District Agreement as amended or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The amounts indicated above for each project are estimates, and the Director of Finance may allocate more funds to any one or more of such projects and less to others, so long as, in the judgment of the Director of Finance, each of the projects described above can be completed within the total appropriation made by this vote. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payments of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payments of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. And I further move that within 48 hours from the date on which this vote is adopted, Secretary B. and hereby is instructed to notify the Board of Selectment of each of the member towns of this district in writing as to the amount in general purposes of the debt herein authorized, as required by Chapter 71, Section 16D of the General Laws and by the District Agreement. In addition, the committee shall cause the same information to be published within 10 days after such authorization as a paid notice and a newspaper circulating in the district.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second to Ms. Marriott. Is there any further discussion of this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand, signifying aye. So, we are now to the fees vote.
Mr. Mangano will take this one as well.
It's okay, I can't see the clock anymore, so time has stopped.
We've seen this before. There are changes to the last...
Thank you.
You have to read every line, I don't read them.
While we're waiting for Mr. Dinsmore, they're not actually all this long. I just, I mean, thank goodness it's a snow day tomorrow, I'm just, you know, I'm not exactly apologizing, because I mean, it's important stuff, you're participating in something that's really meaningful, but I mean, we didn't do this intentionally. If this could have been much shorter, we would have been happy for it to be much shorter.
But if this is a school night... You should definitely get extra credit, or something.
Totally.
He's up at six o'clock in the morning.
Ready? Okay. So, the, so we're proposing two fee increases. One was proposed before the budget vote that just happened, so it's sort of irrelevant at this point. The first one was the preschool fee, so again, the vote that we just, just occurred, that program was eliminated. The next one are athletics, so you heard a more in-depth presentation on athletics. The strategy we've started this year with fees in general is to try to do small annual increases, as opposed to wait, 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 and then hit with like a five or six or seven percent increase, like has sort of been done in the past, especially if you look at athletics. So again, we did two percents and one percent, so there's, you can see the full fees and that for each, so there's three tiers of sports, one, two, and three, and within each tier, there's a reduced rate, one, and a reduced rate, two. So the average rate that anybody pays is sort of between the lowest rate and the highest rate. But we try to tier in a way that people can afford to play sports. And our athletic director has constantly said that nobody is, nobody is not playing a sport because they can't afford to play. He makes, he works with the families to make that happen. And so really, it's just the athletic fee increase for your consideration tonight.
Are there questions? He said this hasn't changed since we've seen it before.
Nope.
It doesn't prevent people from asking questions if they want to, but there's no like last-minute tricks or something in this. Ms. Demble?
Is there a motion for this?
To approve the fee schedule as presented?
See, yes.
So I would like to move to approve the fiscal year 2018 fee schedule as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, I was going to look to Ms. Marriott again, I was going to figure that was my go-to place for a second. Ms. Marriott?
This is FY '19 schedule, right? So just, I'm going to amend the motion.
Oh, I, I could catch, I was reading this.
You know, it's funny. Yeah, I guess for tonight's purposes, I might have removed the fee review section of that.
No, no, that's right. It's a fee review.
It's a review of the current fees with changes for the upcoming year.
Yeah, but she's moving the changes, not the review.
Yeah.
All right, I have to tell you.
Should I amend the, or...
Please do.
...vote on, okay. So I would like to amend the previous motion to approve the fee schedule as presented for fiscal year 2019.
Okay, is there a second for that? Why don't you do this one? Okay. Things work better when Ms. Marriott secues the motions. It turns out they're more accurate that way. The, okay, moved and seconded, is there further discussion on the fee schedule? Seeing none, all those in favor of amendment as moved, raise your hand, aye. Is unanimous?
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda. Yes?
So custodians end their shift at 11 o'clock. They're going to have an awful long day tomorrow, so I just want to do a time check, that if it was agreeable to the committee, I'd like to, if we could end at 10 to 11, so we're fully out of here, because they're going to be back early in the morning doing yeoman's work.
Let's keep rocking.
Yeah.
We can get there. School choice vote, item number five.
So we had the hearing, we discussed this...
I think, by the way, this is actually happening in order of things that might be challenging.
Yep. So I don't have more to add. I think we've talked about having a, perhaps a K to 12 or pre-K, well, not preschool, but K to 12 discussion at some point, perhaps even with some multiple member towns to look at the trajectory of this, but at the same time, we're looking really at a seventh grade and ninth grade and whether slots are available, with seats to fill. We're not looking at a significant increase, because we know our sixth grade from our member towns is going to bring us enough school choice students just naturally, but we want to have the option of, you know, if six to seven and eight to nine are the largest variables, where it's hard to predict enrollment, like eight, seven to eight, we know how many kids we're going to have, 10 to 11, we know how many kids we have, but... how many kids we're going to have. 10 to 11, we know how many kids we have. But families often make different choices in those two times, those two grade spans. So it just gives us a flexibility to look and how many kids actually register, which we have that, we're starting to have that data now. And do we have some flexibility to add a couple seats here and there? So my recommendation is that we continue to be a school choice district, but be very judicial about accepting school, more school choice kids that aren't automatically granted seats in our district.
Okay, is there, yes, is there?
Move to, move that the Amherst-Pelham Regional School District continue as a choice district in the 2000, do I need to say the year? 2018, '19 school year? That's right.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded, moved by Ms. Hazard, seconded by Ms. Marriott. Okay, anything further on this? Seriously? Us? No? Nothing? All those in favor of the motion, please signify aye, raising your hand. Motion carries unanimously. I want to take out of order and go with the PVCI's expansion appeal letter. Vote, item next. Mr. Dunlop?
Okay, so the abbreviated version, it's the same letter that you saw, that we approved last time. This was sent out earlier. It basically has yellow highlights of what has changed. And the substantive change is that previously, we were writing to the commissioner asking him not to approve the expansion. He did so. He did not approve the expansion. The school has the right to appeal. They appealed, and to the board. And so this is redirecting that letter to the board, asking them to affirm the commissioner's decision, basically saying that we agree with it, and adding a couple of bullet points in the appendix timeline of what has occurred. And that's it. And basically, the reason for this is that the appeal is being heard by the board on March 27. And, you know, so we're in a different advocacy point here, right? Because we're agreeing with the commissioner's decision. And so it makes sense to resend our letters in support of that. We'll also be trying to get some members from this committee, from other committees that were interested, advocated on this issue, to speak at that board meeting in support of the commissioner's decision. And that's it.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments on it? Entertain a motion to move, yes, committee?
Will somebody be representing on the committee at the meeting?
I think Mr. Dunlop's gone.
Although if there's someone from another, you know, we, last year, they allowed three or four speakers together. We sort of split the time. So if there are other members, either from this committee or from Leverett-Pelham-Chutesbury, certainly please, more than welcome, more than Marriott.
Okay. We can figure that out some other time. Is there a move to approve the letter as presented?
I'll move to approve the letter as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, dangerously by Ms. Zidaneas this time. Any further comment or discussion?
Seeing none, all those in favor approving the letter. Carries unanimously. Want to go over the protocols now? If we can, or not?
I'm open. Do you want to save this one and go to another day?
I, you know...
Five minutes.
Open, oh, yeah.
And we have gifts.
Let's do, let's do that, only because if anyone has a comment, I'd hate them to feel like they approved them and then later said, "You know, we did it at nearly 11 o'clock in the evening." And what kind of monster does that? Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Dunlop.
When's our next meeting?
Next week.
The 20th.
The 20th.
Oh, sorry, two weeks.
No, no, you're right. A week from tomorrow.
So would it be possible for us to have this on the agenda for next week, seeing as we have a very important vote happening here in Amherst the following week?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And then, just a quick question, do we know yet when, do we have a retreat date set yet for the summer or anything like that, or?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, then that is effectively tabled with general consent to do so. We're going to, let's do gifts.
Looking for a motion?
Yes.
I move to accept the gifts as follows. Arthur and Barbara Elkins, check number 353, to fund the Barbara Elkins Scholarship in the amount of $20,000. And Wildwood PGO to support the high school scholarship for Wildwood alumni in the amount of $250, for a total of $20,250.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved, seconded by Ms. Marriott. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand, signifying aye. It carries unanimously. You can see the topics for our future meeting before you. If, we already have a draft agenda for the next meeting, right? Is there, maybe when, probably not tomorrow, but Wednesday, could we send out that draft to the committee with, with protocols added?
Yes. Just real quick, so I can send this to you, but we might have something to talk about in terms of redrilled transportation reimbursement advocacy. Ms. Zidaneas and I have connected with some other regions very positive way. And so that may be an item of...
Regional libraries is on here.
Okay. I didn't know if it was on for, I didn't know if it was on for the 20th.
I don't remember either. Is there another motion I could entertain at this time?
Move to adjourn.
Is there, moved and seconded? Moved and seconded. Ms. Marriott, all those in favor, please raise your hand. It carries unanimously, we are adjourned.